Get started here. Today is our regular council meeting of Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. Calling to order. Just as a notice, the City Council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice and discussion on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor DC.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
All right. Councilmember Salas, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Honored to do so. Please stand if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, our mission statement.
To protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Excellent. And if I may, I would like to be able to read the land acknowledgement. Did Councilmember Aslan get to read it last time? Okay, good. Thank you for doing that. I want to make sure he was the first to do so. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area as indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place is home. Agenda item number five is our public participation, and we do have two public speakers. Scott Richards, if you'd like to come up? And during the general public participation, just so everyone knows, we're unable to ask questions or comment back and forth with those presenting due to it not being agendized, just so you're aware.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Scott Richards, and I live over on Grandview Drive, which is a center of the museum fire flooding. And I'm just here today to tell you guys that I'm tired. I'm tired of looking at these sandbags. I'm tired of looking at the barriers. I'm tired of explaining to folks why my street looks like a war zone. I'm tired of climbing over the sandbags. I'm tired of picking up the deteriorated sandbags, cleaning up cinders so I don't track them in the house when my shoes are wet. Let's see, I'm tired of staying awake at night contemplating if I should move sandbags so I can use my driveway. Tired of contemplating if I should move them and, you know, compromise my flood insurance if we are to flood during the winter months. You know, I've been told to be patient, and my patience wears thin when I climb over the sandbags at four in the morning and I trip over them, fall on my face because I'm tired after working a 12, 13, 14-hour shift. I'm tired of, or my patience wears thin when I have to take the groceries out of my car, place them on top of the sandbag wall, climb over the wall, and then take them into the house. My patience wears thin when I climb over the sandbags to go to work at one or two in the morning and the crotch of my pants becomes soaked because of the dew or the snow or the other moisture that has collected on these sandbags. And so here's basically my Christmas wish to the Mayor and Vice Mayor and the council members. Once and for all, let's eliminate this threat of the floodwaters coming down my street, or our streets, our neighborhoods, in our homes, and so we can all live in peace and get rid of these sandbags and barriers and not have to deal with this. It's really, it's really an issue as far as, like I said, the winter's coming, the snow's coming, and it's going to be icy on top of the wet. And so, yeah, if we could, if we could get the situation taken care of so we don't, we can all live in peace and finally get rid of these sandbags, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Scott. Deb Harris, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor DC, Vice Mayor Daggett, and councilmembers. As you are aware, CDBG funds from this year were awarded to several nonprofits in Flagstaff, none of which were from the three, none of which were from three of the four targeted neighborhoods that are identified in the Flagstaff application for these funds. The League of Neighborhoods have come together to work with the housing program or department in Flagstaff on next year's funding process. But tonight, I want to ask your support to get information from Housing Solutions for a program for which they receive CDBG funds. Southside has a small grant to pay an outreach person to go door-to-door in the Southside neighborhood to provide owner-occupied residents with information about this program. I sent them, I sent Housing Solutions an email requesting information. As of today, I have not received any response. We're trying to help our residents, but we're not getting any response from the people who have these resources. I know that you can't answer my questions or you can't say anything tonight, but I'm asking you to please help us to get this information so that we can get that information out to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 6A. This is our Proclamations and Recognitions. First is recognition for Mrs. Cleo Wilson Murdoch. If you'd like to come stand, and Professor Guthrie, if you'd like to come up as well. Cleo Wilson Murdoch was a graduate of Winslow High School, an accomplished pianist, member of Harbor Chapel AME Church, and the first teacher and principal of Flagstaff's segregated Paul Lawrence Dunbar School from 1926 to 1940. She was a highly regarded African-American spokesperson and a community builder for the Southside of Flagstaff. Schooled at the first historically black college west of the Mississippi, Western University in Kansas, as well as a state, Arizona State Teachers College, which is now NAU, she tirelessly gave of herself in the field of education, arts, and performance. She inspired many students and residents, including 22-year-old Sawmill Union Secretary Wilson C. Riles, whom she encouraged to enroll at NAU before he helped desegregate Flagstaff schools. She became well-known in the community for her path-breaking leadership and education of youth and residents before her untimely passing in 1940 at the age of 39. Flagstaff recognized Cleo Murdoch's contribution when it renamed the former Dunbar Recreation Center in her honor in 1968. After the Clay Butler Street realignment, neighborhood residents rescued the Cleo Murdoch Community Center from destruction and in concert with the Southside Community Association and NAU's Ethnic Studies Program resurrected her memory through a series of murals dedicated to her leadership and commitment to racial justice, educational excellence, and reconciliation. Miss Cleo's legacy, passion for education, and love for learning through service continue to be sources of inspiration to generations of youth today. Therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby recognize Cleo Wilson Murdoch for her outstanding achievements and contribution to the City of Flagstaff and towards achieving racial justice and reconciliation. Professor Guthrie, if you'd like, you're welcome to say a few words if you'd like as well.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I just wanted to say, a person like Cleo Murdoch was a giant in her time, passing away at age 39. I say of a broken heart, no black woman should die at age 39, but she really gave of her self and her soul to build the Dunbar School and racial conciliation. And today, her name is practically unknown, except on the Murdoch Center. And Southside Community Association said for years, said, "We've got to find a way to find her picture to put a face on the Murdoch Center." And I think that this does this very well. Thank you again, Mayor, and for everyone who's been involved in resurrecting Cleo Wilson Murdoch, a history that still remains a mystery, but we're working at it. Thank you.
Oh, no, you're not getting our picture.
Oh, thank you, Stacey, sorry, I didn't put the mic back. National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its seventh anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and preparing a pathway to well-paying careers and across the nation. Registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. Flagstaff recognizes the role of registered apprenticeship in expanding opportunities in our workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, thus providing a path for all qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, rural communities, justice-involved individuals, and individuals with disabilities to become apprentices and contribute to America's industries. Flagstaff recognizes that registered apprenticeships, a proven and industry-driven training model, provides a critical talent pipeline that can train and build up our workforce to address our nation's pressing issues, such as responding to climate change, modernizing our cybersecurity response, addressing public health issues, and rebuilding our country's infrastructure. Therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor, Flagstaff, do hereby declare November 15th, 2021 through November 21st, 2021, as National Apprenticeship Week. And I do see, Fabian, that you are here, and I'd love for, to hand this to you, as well as if you'd like to say a few words about your apprenticeship programs.
If you want to stand over here. Thank you, Mayor. My pleasure.
Well, on behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and like to thank the City of Flagstaff and the Mayor for this proclamation, it is an honor to receive this and give that next generation of carpenters an opportunity to grow skill apprenticeship, especially here in the City of Flagstaff. So, we thank you all, thank the City of Flagstaff for this proclamation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are down to Agenda Item number seven, which is our City Manager.
Mayor, if I may have a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
this week. Coming up in Flagstaff will be the establishment of a pipe, a pipe fitters apprenticeship training center, which will train and create the pipeline for quality workforce for welders, pipe fitters, HVAC refrigeration. I visited their training center, which is a joint, a joint apprenticeship training center in Maricopa, which will be brought here, and I created this heart in two minutes. So I'm sharing my grateful heart to our, all of our registered apprentices programs that only in Coconino County, but throughout the nation, be caring my Coconino County Warfare Development Board and future registered apprenticeship program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. With that, we're down to Agenda Item number seven. 7A is our City Manager Report. City Managers, tune in electronically. So, take it away.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope the audio is good. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Council. And it is my intent to be there in person after the break. My schedule today just did not allow me to make the trip to City Hall in time, and I apologize for that. That said, I will share with you that it's been a while since I've been on this side of the computer screen watching council meeting from afar, and so far, so good. Everything looks and sounds great. With respect to the Managers' Report for this regular meeting, this report will highlight a number of work anniversaries. We always enjoy doing this. These are anniversaries that occur in the month of November. We're trying something new today by having these presented on a PowerPoint. I hope it works. It's a first, so if it's a little bit clunky, bear with us. We'll dial it in over time. After the work anniversaries, we would also invite Rick Barrett with our City Engineering and Capital Improvements Division to speak about the monthly report that his team has appended to the Managers' Report here. A quick overview on that. We are calling out an item for discussion, and that is the Census. And there's a draft letter in there, and I'm going to invite Sarah Langley and Sarah Dector to speak to that when it comes up. So a little bit of business incorporated into the Managers' Report. With that, as a preface, I'm going to just roll through the report and touch on some highlights, and then we'll go to the work anniversaries. I do want to mention, and it's been mentioned a few times, but it's worthy of mentioning again, that our 2020 Leader of the Year, and this is the Mary Jo Jenkins Leader of the Year Award, has been presented to our esteemed Director of the Parks and Recreation and Open Space and Events. We call that the Prose Division. Our Director, Rebecca Sayers, has been awarded that prestigious recognition. She was featured in the recent edition of GCTV, Stop the Madness series. We had a little bit of fun. That episode has made its wave, and I'm taking the time right now to honor her again with the Council and with the community. And I don't know if Rebecca is able to join us online. If she is, we'd love to have her present herself briefly, and she could offer a couple of comments. But we are just all very excited that she has been the recipient of this award. It is well-deserved. She's done a lot of remarkable things, not the least of which is the assumption of her new role as Director in a newly-created division. And she has also done some amazing things throughout this pandemic, including heading up the very important team that we call the Extended Use of Right-of-Way, and we abbreviate that as Euro. It's a cross-divisional team that has helped expedite a number of creative uses of our rights of way to enhance some outdoor spaces and outdoor seating areas and gazebos in our Heritage Square and street and alley closures on occasion. A number of very positive things that have been well-received to better provide for outdoor seating and meeting spaces, but also to help our businesses, mostly in downtown, but actually throughout the community. So it's been a wonderful endeavor. Rebecca has been at the helm. She's done a lot of things. I give a lot of text to those many things in the Managers' Report. I would invite you to give that a nice read at your leisure. But I see that Rebecca is in person, and I'm not. And Rebecca, how's that for a change? We'd love to hear from you, and it's good to see you.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, City Manager. I can't thank you all enough for the recognition, and of course, I can't thank my team enough because none of us would be here if it weren't for the great City of Flagstaff employees. And I wouldn't be able to do what I do if it weren't for the support and the teamwork that they all provide. So thank you very much yet again. I appreciate it, and it's very meaningful, and I am truly honored. There's just no other words. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca. And I promise you, we're not going to put you on the spot again, at least for some time. Onto work anniversaries, and I take it that the PowerPoint is up.
Yep.
And I'm going to, yeah, it is working so far, so good. Council, we're doing this just as an alternative to having me yak and yak away about these work anniversaries. Now you get to see names and see some faces, and I will be brief and go through this in rapid succession, although we're going to spend a little bit of time, as we do on a regular basis, with the very significant anniversaries, those being defined as 25 years or more. We have a few of them, and a couple of folks will join us in person when we get there. But starting off in the five-year category, if we can jump to the next frame, please, we have Martin Collins, Financial System Analyst. Chase Stoneberger with Water Services, he's an operator. Also a firefighter paramedic, Justin Stasky, I hope I get that name correct, forgive me if I don't, celebrating their five-year anniversaries. And the list goes on. We have Christina Perry, and I was just in a meeting with Christina, so it's quite an honor to call her out yet again. And no, she is our Senior Assistant City Attorney One, and she is celebrating her five-year anniversary. Also, Michael Worley, a police officer with us. Catherine Williams, a firefighter paramedic. And Nancy Darwin, and again, I hope I'm getting the pronunciations correct. She's a police records technician. In the 10-year anniversary, we have Jacqueline Richwine, and she is a Management Analyst upstairs in City Hall. Happy 10-year anniversary, Jacqueline. Also Brenda Sessions, a library specialist with the city, is celebrating her 10th-year anniversary this month. In the 15-year category, Mark Cesaire, IT Manager, Library at the library, we have, the library has its own IT function, and he is their manager. And happy 15-year anniversary, Mark. Kurt Novi is with our, he's with the Industrial Pretreatment. He's an inspector, and he has been with us for 15 years. Happy anniversary to you, Kurt. And we go to our 25-year-plus anniversaries, and I mentioned we have a few of them. I believe Matt Fall is going to be with us this evening. I've given him a considerable narrative in the write-up, as I have with his colleagues who are celebrating 25-plus-year anniversaries this month. Mark is actually celebrating his 28-year career. Mark at the City of Flagstaff, he's with the Parks and Rec Division, and he has served in a multiple, in multiple capacities with numerous accomplishments along the way, including running the city's therapeutic recreation program, working closely with the Special Olympics program, a wonderful program. And he's also more recently been managing the Joe Montoya Community and Senior Center. We hear that the guests there have come to rely on Matt for his great depth of knowledge and information, his support, and apparently his good humor. We hear that he has a good sense of humor, and so he's been a great assistance out there. He also helps out in setting up electronic devices and just about everything. So we can't thank Matt enough for his years of dedication to the Flagstaff community and to our Parks and Rec programs. Do we have Matt with us in the meeting?
I do. I'm here, sir, yes.
Good afternoon, Matt. We've been honoring you, and we'd love to hear if you have any comments to share, but happy 28 anniversary, 28-year anniversary to you, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Greg, and thank you, Mayor and Council. It's been an honor serving the community that I call home. I've been very lucky that 28 years ago, somebody took a chance and gave me a job in the Rec Department, and couldn't be happier, and I look forward to more years continuing to serve our community as best I can. So thank you today.
Thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we have John Marciniak, who is celebrating, check this out, 38 years of service with the City of Flagstaff. I find that remarkable. John, if I may refer to him as John, transferred to the Police Department in 1988 to serve as an animal control officer, and he has been operating largely in that capacity since that time. Over the course of the ensuing years, he's retrieved a multitude of stray or escapee dogs and cats within our community. In the capacity of doing that, I understand he's also been challenged with having to retrieve a number of exotic critters, including, I hope I'm getting this right, a 13-foot Burmese python. Wow. An 80-pound Sulcota, Sulcata tortoise, which I assume you were able to outrun that tortoise. And a five-foot Iguana, and I think the list goes on and on. But a lot of adventures in your career path, John, and when you're not chasing exotic critters and returning pets to their owners, I understand that you also enjoy chasing elk and other animals out in the neighborhood, bears, mountain lions. And I have offered to give you my street address if you'd like to spend some time at our household. When not working, you're also assisting with presentations at the Humane Shelters here in the community. You assist with the National Night Out. You volunteer for the 4H events at the county fair, and you have some excellent hobbies. And two girls, Amanda and Ashley, and a grandson, Kane. Congratulations on that. Our police chief has noted that in dog years, John, you have spent 266 years of, you provided 266 years of service, so congratulations for that. And I would love to hear from you, sir, but I want to thank you for your excellent service and your remarkable tenure with the city.
Thank you very much. Now I don't know how long I'll be with the city. I haven't decided yet to do retirement, but so far, it's doing pretty good, so as long as I'm enjoying the job, I guess I'll stay.
We're grateful for your service, and thanks for all that you do when you're working and the things that you do beyond your work capacity. Thank you for being such a wonderful member of the Flagstaff community.
Thank you so much, John. 38 years.
It is remarkable. If I may continue, then, our next individual is celebrating his 26th anniversary this month. Chief Dan Musselman, our police chief, was hired in 1995 by the Flagstaff Police Department. He graduated with academic honors from Central Arizona the Flagstaff Police Department. He graduated with academic honors from Central Arizona Law Officers Training Academy. He has served four years as a patrol officer before becoming promoted to Corporal Detective. In that capacity, he received the City Manager's Excellence Award, not once, but twice. Dan has served on the Tactical Operations Team for eight years, and he has received the Meritorious Service and Officer of the Year Awards. Wow, a lot of accomplishments. He was promoted to Lieutenant in 2007, Deputy Chief in 2012. He did serve as interim Police Chief. And not that long ago, he was appointed very deservedly to the Chief of Police in December of 2020. We're all quite happy with that appointment. Chief Musselman is an Army veteran. Happy Veterans Day belated to you, sir. He holds a Bachelor of Criminal Justice, pardon me, and a Master of Public Administration from NAU. And when he's not serving as Police Chief, he likes to mountain bike. So Chief, congratulations, sir, on your 26-year anniversary. And we're delighted to have you come up and share with us any thoughts that you would.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is with gratitude I stand before you. I live in a beautiful community, a wonderful city. And I get to serve as a Police Chief where every day I get to witness acts of heroism by people that serve our community. So very blessed and honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Chief.
Next, Mayor and Council, we'd like to recognize Pearl Goldtooth, who is celebrating her 29th year anniversary. She is the Library Supervisor at the Tuba City Public Library. And she started working for the city back then when the library was still located in the old Hogan-shaped building on Cedar Avenue in Tuba City. She assisted in moving that library to its current location on Main Street. I think it's an understatement to say that she has become a staple in the community and has continued to help bring library materials uniquely fitting for the Tuba City community and for the Navajo Nation. The Tuba City Library plays a bit of a different role in the community, unlike other libraries throughout Coconino County. Many of the patrons who come to the library are looking to have Navajo and Hopi documents translated into English, and Pearl has played a huge role in providing that resource to the community. Having a library supervisor like her, and she is fluent in all of these languages, has really helped many in that community and throughout feel that their library truly plays a critical role, which it does. Pearl, as I understand, is not with us for this acknowledgement, but I hope she has the ability to, at some point, watch and listen to what we're saying about her, because we want to thank you, Pearl, for the amazing gifts that you have brought to Tuba City. You have done some wonderful things, and you continue to do those things. And we are indeed honored and happy anniversary to you. And last, and certainly not least, we have Geneva Dawson, who is also celebrating her 26-year anniversary. She started in the mailroom and also in the old warehouse stockroom, where she received and distributed supplies throughout the city. That was 26 years ago. She returned to school and completed her Bachelor of Computer Information Systems, specializing in database administration and Oracle. Geneva accepted a promotion and transitioned over to community development. She began working at the front counter and was ultimately promoted to serve as the front counter supervisor. Some of her successes during her time in community development include migrating the DOS program into an Oracle database, developing the GIS parcel database, and developing the first electronic document management system in the city. And it's amazing to take note of that. My, we have come a long ways, and thank you for helping us along that journey, Geneva. When GIS became a part of the IT Division, Geneva was promoted to Database Analyst, where she was responsible for managing multiple databases. And for the last five years, she has been working as the Help Desk Specialist, where, among other things, she manages the PC replacement process for the city, helping to ensure that all city employees and end-users, that their computers keep functioning at the highest level. This is what CJ Perry, the Director of IT, has to say about Geneva. Geneva's dedication to the city is unmatched by all but a few in Team Flagstaff. She has served multiple divisions and has demonstrated Team Flagstaff's motto to make the city better. She's done that in every role she has been in. I want to thank Geneva for her 26 years of service. Well said, CJ. I would echo that. And thank you for your excellent service, Geneva. Well done. And I am not sure if you're able to join us virtually, but if you are, we'd love to hear from you.
Yes, Greg, I am here. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can. It's amazing that the technology is working, as we honor you, somebody who is very rich in the technology field.
Thank you. Well, I'm just honored, Mayor and Council, for the recognition. It's been a joy. It's been a joy watching things grow and move from DOS to, you know, the current databases and new technology that we have, and actually starting to see the remote access and having the ability to have users work from home remotely. So thank you for the honor. And I plan on being here for who knows how long, maybe another five years.
Fantastic. Yeah, thank you, Geneva.
Thank you, Geneva.
Council, we will move on. I want, congratulations to everybody who is enjoying a work anniversary this month. We will circle back on the census issue, but if we may, first, I would like to recognize quickly, with Economic Vitality Division, that there's been some awards that are discussed at length in the manager's report. And specifically, would like to call out the, and those awards included, by the way, the Golden Prospector Awards. But something that occurred very recently, both EKONA and the City of Flagstaff were presented with one of the Economic Development Deal of the Year Awards. And I thought that this was noteworthy, and it's referenced in the manager's report. But this was for the successful recruitment of the UACJ Whitehall Industries. Whitehall is a leading supplier of precision extruded aluminum automotive components and assemblies, and they are now a resident in Flagstaff and up and operating. And so we're quite pleased with that. And it was no small feat. In fact, it was a rather remarkable feat by many on the team. And bringing this manufacturer to Northern Arizona was indeed a highlight of 2021. And so it was an award that was quite fun to be a part of. I happened to be in a part of that event and was just elated to hear about this award. So I wanted to make note of that. Congratulations to all with EKONA and Economic Vitality Team.
City Manager, sorry, real quick, we do have live, I believe somebody has their video on, that, yeah, I'm not, I can't see the name from here, but we might be able to, yeah, get that turned off for Ron. Though the ceiling fan looks really nice.
Mayor, if I might, Ed Shank, if you can hear us, your camera is on.
Or if someone wants to text him, thanks.
Right now, Ed Shank is quickly handing his computer to somebody else. Okay. Okay. I am wrapping up here. We have some tidbits about the Fire Department. Please read those at your leisure. Human Resources and Risk Management, our Police Department, some good stuff there. The Prose Division, same comment, and Public Works. A lot of wonderful updates that we are sharing with you. I would invite Mr. Rick Barrett to give you a quick thumbnail on the monthly report that came from City Engineering and Capital Improvements. Then we will circle back to the census letter and we'll wrap this up. Thank you.
Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Rick Barrett, City Engineer.
If you could talk into the mic, apparently they're having some issues with, yeah, here and online.
Good evening, Mayor. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, it's typical capital update. A lot of projects in there. We try to focus on the projects that have just had substantial progress. We're doing this on a monthly basis, proud to do so. The one I'd like to really point out is, we have paved the parking lot now where the old courthouse and the prosecutor's building used to be. So demo happened quick, it's paved. We'll get it striped, get some additional parking in downtown Flagstaff. Proud to have that project happen. And I'm here to answer any questions if Council has any.
How many parking spaces is that going to provide, again?
I believe it's in the neighborhood of just under 70.
Excellent.
60-ish. Sorry, I don't have that exact number.
No worries. That's great. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Rick. Just wanted to go ahead and just express gratitude to the efforts of the Bike Lane Pilots. I'm hearing a lot from the community of excitement and a new sense of hope and safety on the bicycle in our community. We got an email about someone who talked about taking the route that was most efficient versus the safest now because of the pilot. And so I just wanted to thank you for that. And I know that that's just step one of the work ahead, but I think that the community, from what I'm hearing, is very excited so far. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. I would just like to take a quick moment and thank our contractor, Eagle Mountain Construction. They're from Flagstaff. They've been great to work with. Marcos Bagnolo, the owner of that company, always likes to do better than he promises, and that's exactly what we're seeing out there. You know, we've had some schedules, but Eagle Mountain's working to beat those schedules for us. Great progress being made. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. And please pass our appreciation on to Christine Cameron and others who have been involved in the municipal, the old municipal courthouse project, what is now the new temporary parking lot. Congratulations on that and the other things as referenced in your report. Mayor, Council, we are going to wrap up here with a discussion about the City of Flagstaff census. You have a little blurb in the manager's report about that. You also have in the report a draft letter. And I am going to invite Sarah Langley and Sarah Dector, the two Saras, to present to you on this topic. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. I would like to bring to your attention tonight a 30-day public comment period that has been launched by the Office of Management and Budget, the federal government, on the appeal criteria by which local governments can use to request a review of their 2020 census data. As you saw in the City Manager's Report, our community development staff who were involved in the census have noticed some potential issues in the data related to vacancy rates being higher than we expected, especially in areas where students are congregated. There's some suspicion that this may have to do with students having left their university campuses around March of 2020, and then right after that, communication coming out from the Census Bureau. And so that created some confusion on where students should fill out their census. So due to those potential data issues, the letter in your pocket stresses the importance of being able to appeal our census data under expanded criteria. So if approved, staff will submit the letter to the Federal Register and the Office of Management and Budget to log our comment into the public record. And then also just wanted to note that Sarah and Shane and some others have reached out to NAU, the county, other cities with universities such as Tempe and Tucson, and the National League of Cities, to see if there's some sort of broader effort that we can additionally sign on to. And lastly, as this seems to be gaining kind of nationwide attention and hitting cities across the country, it might be worth considering whether the Council wants to add this to your legislative priorities for next year. That discussion is scheduled for December 14th, so we can pick up this topic then if you would like. So with that, happy to take any questions. And Sarah Dector is also here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any questions at this time? I am in support of the letter, and I appreciate all of your work to address these data concerns. And I'm seeing thumbs up from Shimonie, as well as Councilmember Sweet McCarthy, and head nods from the remainder of Council. So
Thank you.
We're looking good. Thank you. Thank you very much. And look forward to discussion December 14th.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And do you have any questions of me? Otherwise, I will conclude my report. And thank you for allowing me to spend some time with you. Usually it doesn't go this long, but it's been good stuff. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. These manager reports are really great for being able to really see everything that's going on in the city. So and I definitely appreciate all the recognitions that we're giving to the employees under your leadership and being able to put this forth. Because, man, 38 years of service?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. And then with that, we are down to Agenda Item Eight. This is our COVID-19 update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shannon Anderson, Deputy City Manager. Rose and I have a quick COVID update for you. So we will go ahead and go over the data from Coconino County Health and Human Services, Northern Arizona Healthcare, the Navajo Nation, as well as the Hopi Tribe. And then we'll also have some Indigenous nations' updates for you. As far as our weekly cases, we have trended downward for the last two weeks. We started at 514 the week of October 23rd, dropped to 481 the week of October 30th, and now at 446, with our most recent week of November 6th. Flagstaff area is still trending the highest, followed by our tribal communities. For hospital admissions, we've seen a downturn. But the number of individuals with the age group of 20 to 44, we're starting to see an increase in those again. Previous couple weeks, it's been our age 65 and older, but that younger group is trending upward. For our COVID-19-related deaths, we did have an increase from one to three for the week of October 23rd. We have five reported for the week of October 30th, and most recently, four COVID-related deaths. This is certainly an uptick compared to what we've been seeing the previous two or three weeks. Our community transmission, we are still at the high community transmission rate. We are seeing relatively static on the number of cases per 100,000. We're at 315.2 compared to 353.4 two weeks prior. Same can be true for our percent positivity. We are at 7.6% for the week of November 6th, compared to 8.6% two weeks prior. And then lastly, our COVID-like illnesses at 7.3% compared to 7.1% again two weeks ago. For our vaccinations, we have seen an increase from 60.9% for Coconino County residents to 62.2. So a pretty good growth over that two-week period of time. When we look at our variants of concern, Delta continues to be our biggest area of concern. We do have some October samples now included in this data. We've gone from 1,118 Delta variant samples to 1,483. We've also seen an increase in the Epsilon and then a new Z, but again, very small numbers at this point in time. So for our hospital census from Northern Arizona Healthcare, the number of positive patients within our Flagstaff Medical Center has decreased slightly from 36 to 33, and pending has gone up slightly from 0 to 1. When we look at our hospital capacity, we've got 32 beds available within the hospital, again, taking the 268 licensed beds and then subtracting the 236 that you see in the blue bar, which gives us that 32. We do have zero beds available in critical care because they're using the 41 that they have licensed in that particular unit. It's important to note that this information was as of November 12th at about, I think it was about 7:30 in the morning. And something that Flagstaff Medical Center has been really clear about is that this data changes pretty regularly and sometimes can be on the hour. So if you ever want to look at where we are particularly right now, that link is available on their website, and they keep it updated every single day, typically in the morning is when they provide those most current numbers. So I will turn it over to Rose to go over the Navajo Nation.
I have to put this way down for me. And I'm not wearing heels today, too. I'm wearing my moccasins, so makes me even shorter. Well, happy Native American heritage to everybody. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council for this time again. So as you can tell, I wish a lot more of this information is a little bit more like what Shannon just covered, but this is in covering the 12 days from the last time of I gave you that report, the total tested is at 11,636. And then negative cases have also are at 8,773. The confirmed cases within that 12 days is up to, or increased by 1,084. And then recoveries are at 1,064 and deaths at 23 for Navajo Nation. It's kind of interesting to see the positive cases at, and recoveries almost at the same level, and then looking at the deaths, they sort of just kind of add up to the positive case number. And then for the Hopi Tribe, total tested was at 230, and then negative at 161, the positive increased by 30, and this is in nine days. And so out of those, 43 are Hopi tribal members. And this is because, you know, the number that they have here is also inclusive of the Tubus city counts. And then as far as the COVID cases, according to this Navajo Nation, the COVID cases attributed to the VOC, which is the variant of concern, is that they had sampled successfully around or sequenced 1,260 cases, and 671 of those is the Delta variant, and then 81 is the Delta Epsilon. So it is over half of, over half of these cases that are sequenced are the Delta variant version. And then for the public health emergency orders, remaining the same, this comes in four parts. This was released on October 18th stating that the public health emergency order is, continues for the business at orange status. And then also what remains the same is the order issued on August 12th, which issued the declaration of orange status for schools, and that was effective on August 16th. The August 12th public health emergency order reemphasizing safer at home and also updating the gathering limits is still, as well, still remains the same. And then the order that was done on August 4th, wearing a mask in public continues to be mandatory. And then the health advisory for 56 communities, so on November 8th, a health advisory notice was given, and this was issued on uncontrolled spread of 56 communities. And this is up by eight communities since our last report. And then just saying that schools serving these communities need to implement layers of mitigation for these high transmission areas. And then for the Hopi Tribe, announced that the FDA emergency use of the Pfizer vaccine. So on November 2nd, the Office of the Hopi Vice President issued a media release, and it stated that on October 29th, the FDA authorized emergency use of the Pfizer BioNTech COVID-19 vaccines for children 5 to 11. And then Indian Health Services and Hopi Health Center will be providing the clinical guidance once all the approvals are done. And then continuing the third part of their phasing reopening, the Hopi is, their May 18th is still in effect, where it recommends face masking inside all public areas, common use areas, outdoor locations. And then it also states that employers have to resume unrestricted staffing at work sites. So these are the, what I have from the Hopi Nation and Hopi Tribe. And it's back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Rose, I just want to say thank you for your continued updates and work on this, along with Shannon. I really appreciate them. I know that we're not necessarily taking any action, but throughout this pandemic, I just think that there's so much value in knowing what's going on with our partners, especially to the north, and obviously the situation here in Flagstaff. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Shannon.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Deputy City Manager? Thank you both. I just literally during that conversation, just got a text that a friend got, just tested positive for COVID. So I want to let folks know that it's really easy, a lot easier now to get tested. They have at-home kits available at Walgreens. You can call your pediatrician's office. I had, I did that with my little ones the other day. And just make sure if you're not feeling well, you can get tested quickly, and please take proper precautions, because it really is affecting people still, obviously, by these numbers. So. That, we are down to Agenda Item Number 9, Council Liaison Reports. And I will start at this end with Councilmember Solis.
Short and sweet, yesterday's Parks and Recreation Commission meeting did not materialize due to lack of quorum, and we are actually recruiting for applicants for Parks and Recreation Commission. Please apply. And Airport Commission meeting on this Thursday and next Tuesday is the tourism commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing tonight.
I have nothing. Vice Mayor?
Well, our ever-hardworking Housing Commission participated in three working groups focusing on three areas of housing, emergency housing, rental, and owner occupied. And they did this to prepare for the November 29th Housing Commission meeting, where potential housing bond recommendations will be discussed. So I just want to put that on people's calendars if they're interested in hearing what the Housing Commission is talking about and giving any kind of comment that they have.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Last week, I attended a production meeting with our sustainability team. I do that monthly, and just wanted to say thank you to that team and for letting me sit in on their meetings. It's very eye-opening. And that also, we also had our CJCC meeting last week, and those meetings are open to the public. I think it's every other month that they're open to the public, and I'm trying to figure out how to better communicate that to the public, so you all can engage and tune in. But it's a great meeting. We had a quarterly report from our Sheriff's Department, our Police Department, juvenile, et cetera, et cetera. It was very interesting information to view and to discuss. And I'm trying to find a way to get those quarterly reports presented to the City Council for the public and for us to also review, since we are co-funders of the CJCC position. And so we're talking about that internally, trying to figure out how to bring that forward here, but, and also just to make our data more transparent and accessible to the public in general as well. So there's a lot going on with the CJCC, but that was a big topic that I wanted to report. A lot of work to do. I'm not going to get into the details, but it's good to at least have data and an ongoing report quarterly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Aslan? From the virtual world?
Yeah, one thing really quickly. Councilmember Shimonie was involved in this, too. I'm glad he left some scraps for me to talk about. So I attended the quarterly City of Flagstaff slash APS update meeting, and some exciting new opportunities have come to fruition after years of strategic discussions and planning between the cities of Flagstaff and Phoenix and APS. And the city now has a mechanism for clean electricity. I understand that Nicole is working internally to financially get the organization's options, and she will be presenting a path forward for council in her December carbon neutrality plan update. So stay tuned for that. Should be very exciting stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. That brings us down to Agenda Item 10. These are our consent items. We only have two of them, and I have questions on one, so I'm going to take these separately as opposed to all together today. 10A is the one I had some questions on, and this is the consideration of ratifying of contract. Ratify the retail purchase agreement with Jeff Wyler Columbus Incorporated in the amount of $60,475 for a Chevrolet 3500 HD Silverado truck with dump bed and accessories. Hi there.
Hi, good evening. Amy Hagan, Parks Manager.
Yeah, thanks. So I had a question regarding this, because I know that we have some new full-size hybrid trucks that are going to be coming online here in the next few months. And I just have some concerns regarding purchasing a diesel vehicle truck if we do have some other options. I know we can't really do full electric, but I was just wondering if those options had potentially been pursued, if we had seen any cost estimates for potential, or if it was feasible to purchase a hybrid full-size truck as opposed to a diesel truck.
Those options were pursued. Those happen to be half tons, and so this truck is a little bit larger. But we were also informed that they are not available anytime soon. I believe government purchases were held off until May of 2022. So we took advantage of this that was available at a dealership in Ohio.
Okay. I don't know if any other one from council would like to chime in on that, but. Councilmember Shimonie.
I'll jump in, Mayor. Thank you. Hi, Amy. Good evening. And hi, Rebecca. Congratulations. Very excited for you and for the city. So May 2022 is not that far off. I said the math in my head, it was a few months off. Is it worth waiting?
I think that this fulfills a very serious need for the park section at this time. And coupled with this, we also have our first electric vehicle being purchased at the same time. It will be a sedan, so we'll be bringing that into within our fleet, too. So we attempted, we moved a lot of fleet around within parks and recreation so we could be as effective as possible and attempt to obtain this one last larger three-quarter ton vehicle, and then start to implement what's going to become more available, I think, as the months go by, including this electric vehicle sedan that we're going to get into our fleet, which we're actually rather excited about. So I think that this is in an effort just to begin the transition, so it was one of those last purchases that we'll need of this size of vehicle and with this much power.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You know, if, I defer to your expertise, so if we feel like we should go ahead now, then I'm fully in support of that. But if it could wait, I think that it's not that far off that that is available and an option for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And what was the cost difference? Do you recall for, if we did wait for a hybrid vehicle?
For a half-ton hybrid vehicle?
Yeah, half-ton hybrid. And is that going to fit our needs to only have a half-ton rather than?
Wouldn't fit our needs for this specific-sized truck. So again, this is a larger truck. It's a three-quarter ton with also a dump bed, which the half-ton hybrids will not accommodate that. The bed of that pickup is not long enough yet. So I think until some additional models are distributed, we don't have that option at this time. So it's really, was not, it's apples to oranges, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. I just said, yeah, just wanted clarification on that to make sure we're getting the hybrids and trying to make that transition as it becomes available. But I know technology's got to catch up to
Correct.
what we envision for our future, so.
Correct.
Great. Well, thank you. Any other questions, council? I'd be happy to entertain a motion if you'd like.
Mayor, I move that we ratify the retail purchase agreement with Jeff Wyler Columbus in the amount of $60,475 for a Chevrolet 3500 HD Silverado truck with dump bed and accessories.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Shimonie, seconded by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. The next is the consideration of approval of contract. This is Item 10B, a contract for materials with Santan Auto Partners DBA Santan Ford for four 2022 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Hybrid Vehicles in the amount of $161,776.04. Do we have any questions on this? Or I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor, motion to approve 10B.
I will second that. Motion by Councilmember Solis, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We're now down to Agenda 11A. This is consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2021-51, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving a utility agreement between the State of Arizona Department of Transportation and the City of Flagstaff, authorizing the city to transfer $87,625 to allow the State of Arizona to adjust City of Flagstaff water valves and sewer manholes degrade during the ADOT pavement preservation project along Milton Road and Interstate 40 business route. Staff recommend action is to read Resolution Number 2021-51 by title only.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, and thank you for your time. My name is James Boyer. I'm a Development Engineering Project Manager of the city, and tonight I'll be requesting your approval for a utility agreement between ADOT and the City of Flagstaff. The agreement concerns utility infrastructure within Milton Road and how it will be affected by ADOT's pavement preservation project slated to occur during the 2022 construction season. And the agreement will require your approval to provide funding for the labor costs associated with required adjustments to city infrastructure within Milton Road. So the ADOT pavement preservation project, it's going to entail the resurfacing of Milton Road to assure a longer lifespan and safer driving conditions for commuters. The resurfacing will begin at Forest Meadow Street, the south of Flagstaff, right where you come into town, and it's going to continue north along Milton Road until it hits about Phoenix Avenue, where it'll link up with some of the work that ADOT's already performed earlier this year. And although this is an ADOT project, the city has a role to play. We have significant underground infrastructure all along Milton, and it will be affected by the resurfacing. So the resurfacing of Milton Road will cause the level of the road to change. So as a result, the city will need to raise the level of 37 manholes and 27 water valves within Milton Road. Road. They need to be raised to the level of the new asphalt for our infrastructure to function properly. And these adjustments must be made concurrently with the resurfacing process.
Existing conditions. Oh, no, it is.
If we could mute online, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can proceed. Thanks.
I saw some options here for city council. Like I said, we do request that you approve this. But Option 1, approval of the agreement, will satisfy the federal funding requirements for municipal utility clearances, which will allow ADOT to release their bid solicitation and perform the pavement preservation work necessary to enhance the safety and resilience of Milton Road. The city-funded portion will pay for adjusting 37 manholes and 27 water valves to the surface of the new pavement from Forest Meadow Street to Phoenix Avenue along Milton Road. And to address this need, and because it would not be practically efficient to have multiple agencies working in the same area at the same time, ADOT has requested the city provide funds for the labor associated with raising the manholes and water valves to their new level. The estimate is $87,538, and the funds would be provided by Water Services. Contingencies are provided in the event the final number changes. If the final number does change, the agreement stipulates the city will provide additional funding as necessary. And if the final number comes in lower, ADOT will refund any unspent dollars should the initial estimate turn out to be high. So if we reject the utility agreement, it could jeopardize ADOT's federal funding for this project, and it may prevent ADOT from soliciting bids and possibly forfeit the opportunity to improve the Milton Road corridor before excessive degradation requires more expensive repairs. So it's pretty simple, not a whole lot of time this evening. So like I say, we recommend that council approves the utility agreement, provide the necessary funding, and to help us coordinate with ADOT so this can be accomplished. And we've already seen some degradation in Milton, so this is a good thing for us. It goes through. And if you guys have any questions, I'm here to help you, and we have some other people here to help as well.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Shumoni?
Of course I do. Hi there.
Hi.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here. So in this effort, are we going to be restriping or repainting any of the roads?
Yes, they'll be restriping, repainting, crosswalks will be done. There'll also be repairs as needed to driveways, sidewalks, and curbs as needed.
Wow, this is exciting.
Yeah.
You know, I just think that Milton is such a huge corridor for us and our community, and there's a lot of safety concerns for bicyclists and pedestrians along that corridor. And I'm not saying we should build. I mean, I am saying we should build separate bicycle infrastructure along Milton, but knowing that that's probably a long shot with this. Do you by chance know the average width of the car lanes on Milton?
I believe they're 11 feet.
Okay. And then are we planning? So I have a couple of questions and requests that I'd like to see if there's council support for, and if there's anything we could possibly do about this. But I've seen some great intersection designs that really put bike and ped first, and their safety first.
Sure.
Can we explore that with ADOT?
I, you know, I don't know what our ability or influence would be with ADOT, or if it would be right for us to influence it at this stage. I think that'd be discussion for future projects. This is already rolling pretty quickly, and it being an ADOT right-of-way, an ADOT project, it's been my experience that ADOT does what ADOT wants to do. So and that's not to say that it's not a discussion we can have, but that may be protracted and involve some higher-ups.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we're going to go ahead and put the time into repainting and striping. I mean, I do wonder if this is our chance versus having to double our work in the future. And then my other question is, which I'm guessing is going to be the same answer, is, you know, would they be open to maybe lessening the width of the lanes and then putting maybe some extra space on the bicycle portion?
I would not be able to speak to that. I could not speak for ADOT.
Sure.
I apologize.
Oh, that's fine. I knew I was going to be putting you in a hard spot. But so talk to me about the timing of this in terms of what's the pressure, what is the timeline? If I were to set meetings with ADOT leadership, maybe pull in Councilmembers Solis and McCarthy, since you all have better relationships than I do with ADOT people. I mean, I'd be happy to champion some of these ideas. What's my window look like?
Unfortunately, now, I'm going to put you on the spot, I guess, but unfortunately, this needs to be determined before the 29th of November. That's the deadline for their bids in order to get the federal funding. So this is coming really quick.
Okay, so I got about two weeks is what I hear. So, I mean, I'm just one member of council. I can speak from experience riding on Milton almost every other day. It is sketchy, and it sounds like we have an opportunity to potentially do something really positive for bikes and peds. I'd be happy to lead the charge in building those relationships with ADOT through communication and see if there's any possible avenues of options here. But I'm curious what you all think. But this, to me, seems like a real opportunity.
Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Barrett, you have lots of conversations with ADOT, correct? And I would assume, knowing that how much Flagstaff cares about bike and pedestrian infrastructure and how much this council cares about it, that your conversations with ADOT, you include this information when you talk to them. Is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Daggett, yes, that is correct.
And what do you think the chances of getting a meeting with ADOT and getting them to restripe in two weeks are?
You know, I don't know about Mayor and Vice Mayor Daggett. I'm not certain about, you know, timing in getting a meeting. You know, I think the discussion is worth having, and I encourage council to reach out to the higher-ups at ADOT to further this discussion. To the latter part of your question, I don't think there's any chance that ADOT would agree to postpone the bidding of this project. The design is complete. Boy, I could share what I know about bike lanes on Milton. What we got out there is as wide a shoulder as we can have. We will not get bike lanes per ADOT policy. I mean, this is an awkward position for staff to be in. I mean, I know right where council wants to be. I know where ADOT's at. You know, we've done the best we can to widen that space between the white stripe and the curb and gutter. That's as wide as ADOT will make it on any ADOT jurisdictional roadway. So the discussion of, you know, shaving from a travel lane, which is a whole nother discussion in and of itself, to make space for the bike lane, again, discussion's probably worth having, and maybe it's important that council starts to have those discussions with council to understand what staff's been going through. In terms of, you know, this project, I mean, this project is done. We found out about this at the last minute. IGA required before they could bid their project. Their design is done. They are looking to bid this to get contractors in place to get this work underway first part in the spring. There may be some time there, but I don't know. I'm just not confident that you're going to be able to affect change, and I appreciate the question.
I wonder, too, if in the future, we could help the public understand when any kind of changes are happening to ADOT roads, and if ADOT maybe began to hear from the public a little bit more. I mean, just continuing to hear that there are other modes of transportation that people are interested in seeing on ADOT roads. I'm not opposed to reaching out and suggesting this to them. I in no way want to slow this down because they have a timeline, and I don't want to get in the way of that. But I don't think that it hurts to continue continually just mention that this is the way we'd like to see ADOT roads go.
Yep, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, Vice Mayor, I highly support that. And what I wanted to add is that, you know, in my discussions with our district engineer, Audra Merrick, she's very supportive of having our citizens contact ADOT. Matter of fact, that's ADOT's expectation. So to the extent that we can have our citizens, you know, voice their concerns directly with the entity that has the jurisdictional authority, I think that will help this discussion. Now, what's difficult about that is our citizens feel like we're giving them the runaround, but it's the best advice I can possibly give our citizens to help us with the situation we're facing.
Thank you, Rick. Councilmember McCarthy, or were you wanting to chime in as well?
Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Arizona Transportation Board meeting is this Friday morning, I think. We can double-check that, but I guess the point I'm going to try to make is that they have public participation, and I have spoken at those meetings. That might, maybe this Friday. I was just checking my calendar, and I don't see it on there, so it may be a week later. But anyway, that would be a good thing to say at the public participation, which is the first part of the meeting. So you can go to the web, Arizona... What's the official name of it?
It's the State Transportation Board.
Yes, yes.
State Transportation Board.
Yes, and their meetings are all virtual. And one of the very first things they do, similar to what we do here, is have public participation, so we can tell them what we want. The other comment I'll make is, I kind of live west of Milton, down on the south end of Milton, and haven't been riding my bike much lately, but back when I did, I never rode my bike. I have never once ridden on Milton. I've ridden on the sidewalk of Milton, but Milton scares me, you know. But on the other hand, if we could put some better infrastructure, maybe people could use it. So I think there's opportunity for some conversation. I appreciate your comments, Adam. Mr. Shumoni.
Yeah, Rick.
I just would like to clarify Councilmember McCarthy's point that Friday, the 19th, is the ADOT State Transportation Board meeting. I believe it's at 9:00 AM.
I just, with 30 more seconds to look at my phone here, it is this Friday, and it starts at 9:00 AM.
Excellent. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to echo what Mr. Barrett had mentioned is, it's really being mindful of jurisdictional authority. So this project is, the wheels are already in motion for this project. However, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Barrett, for encouraging members of the council and even citizens at large to engage the State Transportation Board, but elevate the conversation by looking into the Corridor Master Plan 2 and echo the voice of pedestrian and bicyclist safety. However, this project requires our action now and attention, but also moving, making mindful efforts and working with our district engineer, Audra Merrick, in being partners. So there can be great alignment of goals and vision here. While ADOT's main, main goal is to provide traffic efficiency, and our local residents and council is, and even Metroplan, Metroplan's top priority is pedestrian and bicyclist safety. Just having voice at every level of engagement is important, but it's in time, being mindful of jurisdictional authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you. Just a quick couple of comments. You know, with the Fourth Street Bridge, I want to say that was a national award we received. Might have been statewide, but a national award, and that was because of the separate bicycle infrastructure.
Number, we don't know. We didn't make the top two nationally out of 12.
Okay, so I mean, we got ADOT on the map with us because of our efforts in collaboration. And I do appreciate the timing and how this is very late, but this is the first time I'm hearing about this as a council member. And Milton is such a huge corridor that it is just so crucial that, you know, I just see there to really be an opportunity here. And I think electives can really play a role in kind of elevating a conversation and putting pressure on in that partnership. So am I saying we should hold up this discussion tonight? I don't know if that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that we should pause this. But at the same time, this might be our leverage. So I don't know. This is not my territory of expertise. It's like how to negotiate with ADOT. I think that they are good community partners. I will say, though, with the Milton study that they did, they came back with a no-build recommendation. So they're not planning to adjust Milton. It's too costly. It's too much money. They want to leave it as is. So this might be our chance to address their plans through the lens of no-build, which is what they're going to do, in a way that makes it a win-win, more so than what it is today. Because, Councilmember McCarthy, you're right. It is crazy to be on that road, and I'm on that road all the time on my bicycle. And it is nuts, but I am in that very small percentile that's willing to do that. But anyways, I'm going to send out some emails right now to get that conversation going and see if we can get that meeting going. I'm not going to hold up the decision tonight, but I definitely think we should act on it, and I'm going to invite, I think, both of you to join me if you'd like to. And then we'll see, I'll report back with whatever we find out.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. And Councilmember McCarthy?
Just a couple of quick comments. You know, we didn't know about this till about a week ago. So that leads me to two conclusions. Well, we better approve this tonight because we really need to get this going. On the other hand, the other lesson is that you can't wait till it's on the top of the agenda. You have to bring it up, you know, maybe a year ahead of time. And there's other things. When I think about the crosswalk, which I've walked across many times at Plaza Way in Milton, that crosswalk is not perpendicular to the axis of Milton. It's off by 30 degrees, and it takes a lot, you know. It's not like this. It's like this. It takes a lot longer to get across that street. I mean, I kind of wonder if they could do something about that. Maybe not bring it completely to 90 degrees, but, you know, maybe to 80 or something. I actually have some ideas on that, but I don't know if it's too late. You know, what I'm thinking is the west end of the crosswalk could maybe be pushed down to the south so that it's down the street a little. I don't think that would cause a problem. But the point is, it's taken, you know, like 30% longer to get across that road, and it's already a long walk, especially, you know, if you're in a wheelchair or something, which I'm not. But, all right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Real quick, I just want to say that let's, I mean, there's a lot of stuff we could talk about with Milton, and right now we're discussing this one contract for $87,000. So, but Vice Mayor would like to check?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to point out that we recently had a pedestrian fatality, didn't we, at Milton and Old Route 66? So, you know, this isn't just a, you know, cyclists want to be able to use Milton, which would be fine if it was. But this is a safety issue, and so I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, and I absolutely want to be respectful if we're not talking about Milton tonight. We're only talking about this one detail. But I do want to clarify one thing. It isn't true that they're not going to do anything on Milton. They're planning to put islands in the middle of the street to make it so people cannot turn left on a as-you-go basis. And there's a lot of pushback from businesses on that. So that's something to keep your eyes and ears open. And there still are some discussions going on about how we can improve getting pedestrians across that street. That is not finished yet. There's still some high-level discussions going on with high-level people at the state. That's all I know about it.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. And I appreciate Councilmember Shumoni bringing this up and for your continued... this up and for your continued advocacy in this regard. You know, we need it, we need to have more conversations, we need more pressure from the public on this, on ADOT for our state roads, to bring awareness and what we want to see for it. At this stage, though, we're here approving the $87,625 contract, or authorization, and I would like to move to read Resolution Number 2021-51 by title only.
Second.
I have that seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, James.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving a utility agreement between the State of Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, and the City of Flagstaff, allowing the transfer of city funds to allow the State of Arizona to adjust City of Flagstaff water valves and sewer manholes to grade during the ADOT pavement preservation project along Milton Road and Interstate 40 business route.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-51.
Second.
I have that seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Down to Agenda Item Number 11B, this is the consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2021-49, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff for the Criminal Justice Integration System. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2021-49 by title only.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Heidi Lofgren, and I am the Deputy Court Administrator with the Flagstaff Municipal Court. I do not have a presentation today, but I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, do we have any questions from council right now? With that, I move to read Resolution Number 2021-49 by title only. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff for the Criminal Justice Integration System.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-49.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Down to Agenda Item 11C, this is consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2021-50, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Westwood Estates Fire District to provide fire and emergency medical services. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2021-50 by title only. Chief.
Mayor and Council, this is fairly administrative to continue a relationship that the city's had with Westwood Estates Fire District for quite some time now. If you have any questions about the IGA, I'm happy to answer that. You've seen similar IGAs such as this. I will note that there was some discrepancies that were pointed out. Thank you, Councilman McCarthy, and we've cleaned up those in the, in the version that you currently have in front of you, as far as effective dates. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to, here to help.
Thank you much. Councilmember McCarthy.
You say we have it before us, I mean, has, has the packet been updated, or?
It has, by the clerk's office.
Yeah, okay, so maybe you can just tell us what those dates are, just, what, was this, it was a start date, was it this year or last year?
It is 2021.
Okay. So with that change, I'll make a, a motion to read Resolution 2021-50 by title only.
I second that. Motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Westwood Estates Fire District and the City of Flagstaff on behalf of the Flagstaff Fire Department for fire services.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-50.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11D is the consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2021-52, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between Arizona Board of Regents for and on behalf of the University of Arizona and the City of Flagstaff for the Flagstaff Flood Mapping Program. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2021-52 by title only.
I move to read Resolution 2021-52 by title only with one comment, go Wildcats.
I did see Ed pop on there. Were you wanting to make any statements on this agenda item?
No, I'm good. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no extra comments, I'm just here for any questions that may arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion on the table that I would like to second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Arizona Board of Regents for and on behalf of University of Arizona and the City of Flagstaff for the Flagstaff Flood Mapping Program.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-52. Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 11E is the consideration and approval of contract, approval to not execute the lease agreement with U.S. General Service Administration, U.S. Geological Survey Campus Build Suit. Staff recommended action is approval to not execute the lease agreement for the U.S. Geological Survey Campus reconstruction with the U.S. General Service Administration in the amount of $1,894,137.78 annually and the duration of 10 years, firm option for 20 years.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, David Peterson, Capital Improvement's Project Manager. Can you hear me all right on your end?
Yep, we can.
Excellent. I'm going to shut off the camera to give a presentation. This evening, I'm going to be presenting on the USGS Build the Suit and the ask to approve not to execute the lease that we were before you last September. I'm going to go through what we've been doing the last year, and then I'm going to kind of touch on the project as it was scoped when we brought to, to last September, and I've asked Rick Tatter to come forth in the last three slides of the presentation to really talk about the financial aspect of it. This project is located up on McMillan Mesa, the USGS Science Center campus is, is up there just south of the Buffalo Park. This is the Buffalo Park parking area here, just to the north of the campus. Campus is located here in the central part of this image. Here you can see Cedar Avenue peeling off to the east or off to the right on this image. Over the past year, City and U.S. General Services Administration, which I'm going to refer to as GSA staff, has met numerous times. We've had good discussions, discussing mainly focusing on finances and campus facilities in our discussions. A lot of those have looked at the facets of the, of the project over the, over the last year and how that has changed. This project has been around, the design was conceptual design, the schematic design was done back in 2011, so it's not a new project, but it's been something that's been on the forefront of, of staff for a while. In the fall of 2000, just after coming to council in September, we looked at the challenging aspects of the finances, likely not to cover the expenses of new construction. So city staff began to work with the GSA to try to see if we could come up with a solution that would make the project feasible, even under the, not having to build the two new buildings that I'll go over here in a couple of seconds, with the demolition of the two existing buildings. So we looked at what would, we call the hybrid approach. So rather than demolition occurring on two of the buildings and construction of two new buildings, possibly demoing just one building and then constructing one new building while renovating one of the buildings. During that time, we worked with a construction contractor to receive some renovation estimates, as well as update the new construction estimates that I'll show on the next slide. But in, in the work that was put forth in renovation estimates for buildings three and four, keep in mind that these two buildings were built in the 1970s, so they're approximately 50 years old each. Even with the renovations that were done, that they would still not meet existing building codes to today's standards. And ultimately, the, the big item here was that the GSA required that the two new buildings be built per the program of requirements and the square footage requirements of the lease. So the program of requirements, I'm going to refer to a couple of times in this presentation, and it's simply just, it's a 280-page document that's really the specifications of design. So when I refer to the POR, that's what I'm referring to. The new construction estimates that were completed also by the, the construction contractor came up to about $38.3 million. And in the last meeting with the GSA and the city staff, we discussed the option, since the hybrid option wasn't a viable solution, the reality of potentially having to resolicit the project, resoliciting the Build the Suit project. There are some benefits and there are some downsides to that as well. Some of the benefits are that we could update that POR document from the USGS. And I'll allude to this in a couple of slides, too, but there's a lot of changes that have come about. That document was created in 2014, it was revised in 2017, so going to bid on a four-year-old document is concerning, especially with technological changes and security changes in the last four years, as well as telecommuting work. In there is specifications for office sizes, number of offices, and that's something that the team really felt that the USGS would really like to revisit before going forward with the construction from a document that was back in 2017. So that's one benefit. Another is the renegotiation of lease rates in a future Build the Suit, as well as exploration of city funding options and looking at other ways we could bring more money to the table into the project. The downside is, is that there would be a delay in the project, clearly, but this is better, the team decided to delay better than starting construction and not being able to complete the, the project or the construction. Just to review again, we have the Science Center campus is over here on the right, and we, currently today, consists of Building Six, Building Three, Building Four, and Building Five. So as originally scoped, the Build the Suit project was going to demolish Building Three here, which is their current lab and office, and construct a new two-story lab and office here is Building Seven, shown in orange, and then Building Four, which is their current warehouse, would be demolished and construction of a new warehouse here, shown as Building Eight. Then the campus would then consist of Buildings Five, Six, Seven, and Eight, and Three and Four would be demolished. Again, we were back here last September for the, asking for the approval of the lease back in mid-September, due to the financial constraints and just investigating and negotiating with the GSA. It was sought and recommended that that not be executed, which is why we're back here tonight to ask not to execute that lease. And then just to give an idea and a background for the, the council and the staff, to just share that the cost has significantly increased over the past five years since the initial estimation work was done back in 2016, and that's about a 70% increase from 2016 to what was completed earlier this year in 2021. In the last discussion with the GSA, they presented an option for a 10-year, what they're calling a succeeding lease, that could also come in the form of two five-year consecutive leases, and what this would do is it would extend the current lease for continuing USGS operations in those Buildings Three and Four. So this would come back to council for your approval, to approve this succeeding lease, and then also it would allow time for the GSA to re-scope and resolicit the Build the Suit project. So this would allow, like I was speaking earlier to, the USGS to update that POR, that program of requirements, infrastructure needs, so they could ensure that that, it meets their current needs in today's climate and work environment. It also would allow the city to investigate, again, the further funding opportunities to, to see the project through to fruition, as well as updated leasing rate could result from a resuscitation. The city staff would be coming back again, in addition to that 10-year succeeding lease, we'd be coming back again to council to, once we have a winning bid on a resuscitation with the GSA, to approve a lease with the Build the Suit project. So it'd be a very similar ask to what we were back in front of you last September, asking for approval to enter in a lease with GSA and the city. So that would just come in the context of a new lease. And as I spoke to earlier, that program of requirements was created back in 2014 and revised in 2017. So this would allow the USGS to make sure, again, that their agency needs and infrastructure needs are being met in today's world. And as you can see, the, the current buildings that have been there 50 years, we're, we're building infrastructure that could be there for a long time, so we want to make sure that that infrastructure meets their needs today and into the future. And before I turn the presentation over to Rick, I just want to extend my thanks. I've been involved in this project for about a year and a half, and there's a lot of great shoulders that I have the fortunate blessing of standing upon, Rick Tatter being one of those, Stacy BK, Bryce Doty, and Aaron Winchell from the GSA as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Rick.
Thanks, David. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. I was asked to give you kind of a, a financial recap of the USGS campus and where we took our approach and where we are today with this lease potential item. So going back to 2004s, when our community approved Proposition 101, they agreed that we should continue to invest in the USGS campus and build additional structures up there, or keep the needs that USGS and GSA have in our community. They authorized about $61.2 million for us to go out and build, renovate, improve, and those types of things that were in the ballot measure. We've only tapped a little bit of this so far, about $3.3 million so far, so we have a lot of capacity to continue our partnership with USGS up on the science campus. You do see the language of the ballot talking about construction or renovation. We tried both those options with our processes this go-round, and it's determined that neither of them at this point are working financially. As part of the voter approval, there are some limits set forth in the pamphlet and what the voters approved. We cannot issue debt above 10%, which is very high in these terms and these dates, but there's also a cap on a number of years. We can only do a 25-year debt for this type of a construction building. And the reason we go to the voters for this type of project is because of our city charter requires us to get voter approval for construction of facilities with a few exemptions. So that's where we started off and where we hope to continue our partnership with USGS. So recapping where we were at a little while ago, when we were actually looking to execute this lease, we've been negotiating for quite a long time. We've been coming back and forth and trying to get to the numbers that fit both their lease requirement agreements, their monthly rents, as well as we, we can afford through debt service payments and maintenance of the facilities. Of part of that project, the city agreed to contribute $3 million in cash toward the project, and we're taking this from a reserve fund that we built out from previous lease payments that USGS has paid us. We hold these revenues aside to fix buildings, repair buildings, replace roofs, H-back and so forth, but we've had some capacity here and we thought we can do our part to reduce the total cost of financing. The remainder of the $27.8 million we were going to finance, and it worked out for us, but there were some give and take that we had to do in negotiating that. We had to look at a debt length of 22 to 24 years because of the current interest rates and the current amount of the project. We actually had to extend it past the 10-year original plus 10-year renewal to make it work financially and still have the reserve set aside to do the repairs over the long-range plan of the project. We got there, we, we were able to provide a financial model that did cover this project, and it required USGS to give annual lease payments, about $1.9 million, which also put it 80%. USGS to give annual lease payments, about $1.9 million, which also put $80,000 set aside to help those future repairs that you know will come over life of these buildings. So we were so close. We worked so hard in getting to that point. But over the last year, we all know how construction costs have increased. And for this project, our current estimates have increased by about $10 million. It's a hard way to balance this equation when a number increases by that much. Not that we didn't try, and we didn't look at this and look at the options, but because one of the factors is GSA is not flexible on raising their rent rate for the contract. They had a preset amount that they were allowed to go for. That number was not part of the equation that would change. So we had to look internally and say, well, how can we make this project work? So really, there's very few options when we come around to this, and three of them are identified here. One is, can the city come up with an additional $10 million for GSA campus? And no, we really do not have those types of reserves sitting around for GSA and USGS to help build the campus. The second option was to, you know, eliminate all the reserves, extend the lease, extend the debt service, and based on the numbers calculated, we'd have to go up to about 37 years to make something like this happen. But you saw earlier, we can only go 25 based on voter approval, and I would probably never recommend going out this long for a debt. So now we're at a point where staff is recommending to not execute this lease agreement due to the financial considerations on the city. And with that, I will turn it back to Dave for any closing remarks and council discussion.
Thank you, Rick.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I find this whole thing to be kind of interesting. The city is a real estate developer and a landlord. Why wouldn't it have made more sense to just lease the land or sell the land to the federal government and have them build these buildings that they need for some time, 10 years? Hopefully longer, but they're not willing to sign a contract for what was a 10 plus 10. So, but they're only guaranteeing 10, right? So the city is taking the risk that USGS will continue to use these. And I understand that there's definitely some city benefits, a lot of good-paying jobs, a lot of prestige in having USGS up on top of the hill. But I just kind of wonder, you know, does this really make sense that the city's becoming a real estate developer and a landlord? Rick, do you have any comments on that? If you don't, that's fine.
Mayor and council, I'm not sure if I have a defined answer for that, and maybe Bryce Doty would even, if he's available, would have some comments to that. But this is the partnership we've been working on for many, many years. We do own that property up there. I think it'll probably take a lot to land, split those parcels, sell off land, and I just don't know if that would be in the best interest. But then again, USGS would have to front the construction and front the monies, and I don't know if they have that capacity. So I don't have an answer as far as what's the best way.
Well, and I understand there's a lot of precedent here, and I don't think we want USGS to move out of town. That's a consideration, too. But it's a, I just thought I'd throw that out there for discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Do you have any questions, council? Councilmember Shumani?
Now, just say that I'm very bummed that we're not moving forward and that the prices have jumped like this. I was, it definitely was a damp on my day when I read this agenda. And so sorry to our partners at the USGS, and I guess we'll just have to take this one step at a time. And thank you to you and our team that have worked on this.
Yeah, you know, I'll say thanks to David for trying, you know, different ways to advance this and move this forward, and the team that had the conversations. But, you know, we also heard from GSA, Aaron Winchell, that they are still interested in being here, and they will very likely bring back another proposal for us to bid to. So I got the impression they agreed. This has gone too high in cost. Let's step back and redo this. So I think we'll have a good partner still.
Excellent. Well, with that, I mean, these costs are way high, and I'm definitely in support of going back to the drawing board with our partners, and I really appreciate all of your hard work on this and the team to try to troubleshoot the situation. But this is pretty insurmountable under the current agreement. So with that, I move to approve to not execute the lease agreement for the US Geological Survey Campus reconstruction with US General Service Administration, the amount of $1.9 million annually in a duration of 10 years, firm option for 20 years.
I'll second that.
I have that seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Well, it's 5 o'clock now, and I think this is a good time for a little break. Yeah, would you, 15 or 20 for you, Councilmember McCarthy?
As far as I'm concerned, short, because I didn't bring food.
Okay, then. 15 minutes it is. We got some Snickers and stuff upstairs for you. All right. See you back here at, let's do 5:15. Thanks. All right, we are down to Agenda Item 12A of our discussion items. This is the discussion of San Francisco Square Affordable Housing Project and Parking Garage at 320 North Humphreys Street. Mr. Volk?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Deasy, Vice Mayor Daggett, and council members. My name is Dan Volk. I'm the Community Development Director. Really excited to be here tonight to give you a preview of a project that we'll be bringing back to you probably in January for your consideration. So just a little overview of what we're going to talk about tonight. Again, there's no decisions to be made. It's just a discussion item. So I'm going to give you a little primer on transect zones and specifically the T5 zone, which is where this project will be located. We're going to get an update on the site plan and what the schedule is to bring that site plan back to you. The applicant is using an affordable housing incentive, which the city council needs to consider. And then finally, we're going to wrap it up with a discussion on an existing partnership and then a potential future partnership on parking in the downtown. And so tonight with me, we've got Alexandra Puccirelli, our Acting Planning Director and current Planning Manager, David McIntyre, Community Investment Director for the property owner of the project. We've got Steve Hastings, who's the Chief of Real Estate for Foundation for Senior Living. Lindsay Schube is the attorney for the project. And then Doug McCord is the Principal Director of Design with Architectural Resource Team. He's the project architect. And those three, I believe, are joined with us virtually tonight. So just to orient you, this project is located at 320 North Humphreys, just about two blocks north of City Hall. If you can see my arrow, this is the, it's the location of the old Catholic elementary school. And so it's going to cover this entire block. This photo is showing you the old school, the Babbitt House, which is on the corner of Dale and Beaver to the east. You've got Cherry to the south. The new courthouse is located here. This is an old aerial. And then Humphreys. Just a high-level summary, it's a project proposed for 146 units of affordable housing. This is broken up into two phases. Again, located at 320 North Humphreys, all of the units will be available to 80% AMI or less. And the property owner has received a low-income housing tax credit, which is how they're able to make a project like this financially pencil out. I don't believe I've talked to this council about our transect zone, but this is something that we adopted in 2011. And so I just want to give you a little background, because this project is using our transect zoning code. And so in 2011, we adopted a new zoning code, which is Chapter 10 of our city code. And on the left, you see what is known as kind of a conventional zoning map with a lot of colors that we're used to seeing. Red is for your, this is City Hall right here, and so red is your central business district. Purple is the highway commercial and community commercial. You've got multifamily and then single family. And conventional zoning has been around for, really since 1919. We actually celebrated 100 years of zoning a few years ago. Conventional zoning is also known as Euclidean zoning, and this is because in 1926, the city of Euclid, Ohio, was upheld that zoning was actually constitutional. And so traditionally, zoning has separated uses, right? And so you've got a commercial zone, you've got a residential zone, you've got an industrial zone, and it was very focused on keeping uses separated. And there was a movement that started really in the 1980s and 1990s to do what's called a form-based code. And form-based code focuses more on the form of the building. So it's less concerned about the uses and what's happening in the building and more about building places, right? And what the connection is between the building and the public realm, the street. And so we adopted this form-based code in 2011, and it's an optional code within this downtown regulating plan. And similar to what I showed you here, which is kind of a central core, and then it kind of, the intensity kind of radiates out from the center. The idea with the transect is we organize the transect in six transects from T1 to T6. And it's just a way to organize the different kind of areas and uses. And so T1 is your natural area, so the forest. T2 would be your open space. T3 and 4 are your residential neighborhoods. T5 is getting into your main street, and then T6 is really your central business core. And so what we mapped, again, is radiating out from the center and the most intense. This is your business core. This is our T6, right, which would be the most intense. And then this darker purple is the T5, which is, this project is in the T5 transect. And then T4 and T3. And so again, it kind of, it's interesting to me to compare these maps and how the intensity kind of radiates out. And so again, the transect is a form-based code, based more on the form, and we have this area where we provide owners an option, so they can choose to use either the conventional zone or the transect. And once they choose to use the transect, and that runs with the property, you can't go back and choose between the two different districts. And so when we created the transects, we tried to reflect the underlying zoning as well, because as you know, Arizona is a very strong property rights state. And so, for example, the T5, it allows two to five stories. And if you go back to the corresponding community commercial, this zone actually allows 60 feet in height. And so even though within this area north of downtown, you don't see, I'm not sure if we have any five-story buildings, 60 feet in height has been right really since the 1970s. So a lot of people think this changed in 2011, that we all of a sudden allowed all this new density and intensity. But actually, our commercial zones have allowed 60 feet in height since the 70s. It's just that the demand for that use and the value of the land hasn't been high enough to demand a higher intensity of use. So again, this project is going to be utilizing the T5 Open, which is one of our, it's called the Main Street Transect. They're using the commercial block building type. And then they're using this brand-new affordable housing incentive. And so in March, you adopted an affordable housing incentive, which said, if you provide a project that's 100% of the units are affordable, targeted at 80% AMI, area median income are lower, then the council can consider granting code modifications. And so these would be modifications from our development standards. And so this project, Foundation for Senior Living, they are going to be requesting a number of modifications from our zoning code, and we're going to be bringing those to you, we believe, in January. And so this is kind of a preparation for that consideration in January. The other thing I want to mention is the commercial block building type. So after the lawsuit regarding the hub, we went back and looked at our transect code, and the commercial block was a building type that we had a lot of discussion about. We made a change in our code to make it clear that you cannot use commercial block in the T4 and one open, but in the T5, we presented some options, right? So one option was, should we create kind of a small, medium, and large commercial block building type? Ultimately, what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, and Stand Up for Flagstaff actually recommended this as well, was to, rather than try to make the building smaller in T5, is to look at it architecturally. And so we adopted a standard that says, you know, these large buildings should be broken up so that they read as separate buildings. And the way you do this is through variation of materials, altering the location of doors and windows, other fenestrations, architectural fenestration, so that it appears as multiple buildings, even though it might be one building that's 100 feet long. And so I believe this is maybe the first time we're applying this commercial block standard to a project. And so we're doing several firsts here. You're going to get to review this in January, consider the modifications in exchange for the affordable housing. And then I pulled this out of our zoning code just to give you an example of how form-based codes differ from conventional codes. Form-based codes are often described as very, they require a lot of detail, right? So they're prescriptive. They're very prescriptive. And when you look at this diagram out of our code, it shows you a building front, and it's got a letter F here. And F tells you that this can be two to five stories. And then it's telling you in between the floors, I, that you have to have a minimum of eight feet of clearance. On the first floor, H, you have to have 14 feet of clearance. And then over here, it talks about the placement of the building, and we have build-two lines. And so again, the emphasis is on the form of the building. It's prescriptive. It's meant to be predictable, right? So we should know what the building, we should have some idea of what the form is going to be. And again, less emphasis on what's happening inside the building. And you may remember a few weeks ago when we talked about high occupancy housing, one of the public comments was, you know, we're kind of getting away from the form-based code with the high occupancy housing regulations, because again, we're starting to get into counting bedrooms and bathrooms and some of that. And that comment, I think, was really directed at this idea that form-based codes are less about what's happening inside and more about getting the desired form and connection to the public realm. So that's your planning lesson for tonight. I hope you enjoyed it. I'm now going to turn it over to Alexandra Puccirelli, who's the project manager and who's reviewed this project for us. And we'll be around for any questions you have at the end.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Alexandra Puccirelli, Acting Planning Director, current Planning Manager, and the planner who reviewed this project. This project is coming to us in two stages, or phases, sorry. The first phase is San Francisco Square, and that will have 100% affordable units. They're geared towards seniors. There'll be 70 units, based on my counting on the floor plan. Right now, they're proposing 61-bedroom units and 10 two-bedrooms, and there'll be 59 parking spaces. Then we'll do Phase Two, which is called Aspen Lofts, and that will also have 100% affordable units. But those will be more multi-generational living, more traditional multifamily. That'll have 76 units, 37 one-bedrooms, 22 bedrooms, and 19 three-bedrooms. That'll also contain a parking structure, which will have 55 residential parking spaces and 97 city spaces. So I'm going to try and walk you through the plans just really briefly, so you have a vision of what this project's going to be. It's a little complicated just because the slope of the site and the two different phases, so bear with me. Phase One, you could see, this is the first floor, but up here along Dale, this parking is actually mostly underground. So when you're walking down Dale, you'll primarily see the residences that are above the parking. So this is the Phase One parking. It's located underneath that building. If we go ahead, sorry, if we go ahead to the next floor level, this gives you a more sort of typical floor plan, so the second, the third, the fourth, and the fifth story will be more like this. Phase Two, you see here, has that parking structure in the middle, and then the units wrapping around the edge. Access to this project will primarily be for the residents off of Beaver. It'll come in this driveway, and then they'll be able to park in this Phase One or enter the parking garage this side of the parking garage, and that's the the parking garage this side of the parking garage, and that's the residential. And you can see here on Cherry, if you remember from that, that aerial that Dan showed us, the Cherry parking is right across from the courthouse. So this is that public parking garage that's on the first level, and then goes up to the So here are some perspectives that the design team shared with us. This is the view from Humphreys and Cherry. So you can see, over here, we have that entry into the parking garage for the public parking. And then these sort of walk-up units here, then stepped back are these upper-level apartments. Here's a perspective, again, from Humphreys, but up by Dale. So you could see here that these units are accessed directly from the street, as well as from the interior, but you can't see that parking. That's all underneath this area. And then this is the view from Humphrey. The two phases are divided by what they're calling a paseo, that allows access, sort of mimicking our alleys downtown, that there would be this pedestrian connection from one side to the other. So as far as process, we conditionally approved their site plan at the end of October. It does require city council approval, because they're asking for modifications to the code that they're permitted under that 100% affordable project. We had first been looking at December, Dan had mentioned January. I think I had Stacy put it on the calendar for February, but it's February, like, 1st, so very soon in February. And now I'll hand this over to you, Dave.
Thanks, Alexandra. Thanks very much, Alex. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, David McIntyre, Community Investment Director for you, for here at the City of Flagstaff. And I just have two slides. One is acknowledging that we already have a current partnership that's providing parking in our downtown, working with the Foundation for Senior Living. After they acquired their property, Steve Hastings and I had a great set of conversations, and it ended up with them leasing that parking lot that was formerly serving the Cherry Building, or the Catholic School. And capital improvements went in, they did a great job reworking it, and now we have 90 spaces which are serving the downtown, and also serving municipal court staff and customers, providing that parking for the court. They gave us a very fair price on the license, and it's basically in place until they need to use it to build that second phase you saw. There is going to be some loss of parking potentially when they build the first phase, because they'll need some room for staging, but they've worked really hard to be able to leave as much of it available as possible, so that we can continue providing it to court staff, to court customers, and to the general public. It serves Employee North, as well as patrons and court staff. But there's also negotiations which are still underway to purchase a parking garage, to purchase the parking garage that you saw outlined in the plans Alex was just showing you. Current design shows that parking garage is able to provide 97 spaces that would be managed by the city. There are also spaces for their residents, as you saw. The city would purchase these completed spaces from the project at their cost of development, so we'd be paying what they pay to build them. And currently, that estimate is at $4.8 million. Now, you've heard a couple times over the last few meetings, and certainly earlier tonight, about how costs escalate, so just be aware that that's a current estimate. However, that's the, that's the amount that we're working with, and again, whatever it is, is going to be at their, it's, they're basically offering to sell it to us at their cost. And the intention, again, as mentioned, is not only to, to address the required parking for the courthouse, to provide that, that parking for our downtown as well, but also to maintain that surface lot as much as possible in the development of their phasing. So this does, this does provide 97 spaces there. You also heard about the old courthouse, the former courthouse, and the demolition and repaving that's happened there, that provides another 55 spaces. And so serving the court and the downtown will be able to have that 97 plus that 55, which, which does a lot to park that area. I'm trying to keep it fairly simple, so let me know if you have any questions. Also, Steve Hastings, I believe, is online, and at this point, I'm supposed to pass it along to him, unless you have questions for one of the city staff, before we go to Steve.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I have one question for you, and that is, that dollar amount, does that include, are we, are we leasing the land, or are we purchasing the land and the parking structure?
So in the current arrangement, we are licensing the land, and that is a temporary arrangement until things move forward. The idea is to purchase the 97 spaces. In an original design, we were actually purchasing the parking garage, that's still how we talk about it. But as the design has shifted, it's become more complex, as there are units that are attached to the parking garage in various ways. So part of what, I mean, when I say negotiations are underway, is we're still working through, what's the best legal mechanism for the city to own those spaces? Do we condoize it? Is there a lot split, or do we just buy those rights? The intention is for the city to own that in, in fee, in, as real estate, and not to be leasing it from them. They have been generous enough to offer that if we can't buy it upfront, we can do a lease-to-purchase over 25 years, paying financing towards them. So they've been very open to whatever arrangement works best for us, again, at, at the cost that is required, with the intention that the city would own those parking spaces at the end in some form. And, and that would come back to you, of course, once we've figured out how to do it legally.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And I have a question for Alexandra, if I could. Did you say that the residents could park on either side, Phase 1 or Phase 2? Yes, that is correct. There's, there's 59 spaces for Phase 1, and then there's 55 for Phase 2. When I talked about those code modifications that we'll be coming back to you with, one of them has to do with the parking requirements, especially the applicant is, has experience with these senior housing developments, and, and they're really saying, you know, we don't, we don't need that much parking for our residents. Likewise, with the multifamily, so that'll be one of the things we get to talk about, hopefully, in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, come back on. Can you remind me, so this 4.8 estimate, where's the money going to come from? Is it from the Park Flag lockbox, or is this from the CC manager shaking his head? I'll, go ahead and let you answer that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. And, and of course, Rick Tatter and Greg Clifton are both here to, to get even more clear, but, but no, Park Flag, originally, the reason you're seeing me up here is because Park Flag helped begin these negotiations. We were eager to find a way to generate parking, but this is actually a part of the court project, it is part of the, the parking required for the courts and serving the courts, but it will also be available to the public, and Park Flag will manage it. And then ongoing, the revenues from Park Flag's management of, of those spaces that are available to the public, not being used by court personnel at the time, that will pay for the maintenance. So we'll be able to take that maintenance off the court's shoulders, pay for it by providing the public with additional parking in the downtown, and it will meet the, the court's needs.
And so is the funding coming from the courthouse project, or is it a general fund?
I believe it's coming from the courthouse project, but whether that's general fund or, or a different source, I'd look to Mr. Tatter or Mr. Clifton to answer. I believe there's, there's numerous ways that that could be done.
Sorry to make you get up, Rick.
I was getting comfortable. Mayor and Council, we're still working on the perform and how that works, and they've been gracious to talk about lease payments over time. So it would basically be a general fund commitment in the long run, where if we have lease payments, we would pay that over time. Or if we have the opportunity to have cash available, we can pay down that lease amount and actually pay less per month. So eventually, it is a general fund commitment that we'll need.
Okay, thank you. And, and I'll just say, while I had the mic, that, you know, I'm excited that we found a way to make something work here. This is a big deal, and I know this means a lot to our community and to the courthouse. So very excited to see this move forward, and I am interested to see what that number ends up becoming in a few years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I had a question for you, Dave. Regarding these 97 spaces, how many are going to be needed for court purposes? And how mu, how much of those spaces are going to be available for, say, employees or customers for downtown businesses?
So my underst, uh, Mayor, thank you for the question. My understanding is that, is that may change over time. Of course, the courthouse wasn't built to immediately be full, it was built with the idea of longevity, so as court uses intensify, that parking need will likely intensify as well. At the moment, we are providing F2 permits to court staff. I believe there's usually probably about 16 to 20 cars in there right now as court staff, and then you see a significant number of, of customers or, or guests coming in and out of the parking lot as well. And then additionally, as mentioned, Employee North. So you may recall from Park Flag, but for the public audience, there, the employee permits for all downtown are split between Employee North and Employee South, and Employee North permits are able to park there as well, we do see some use there. And then, of course, the, the public's able to pay to park, which is where we would be generating that financing money. So I don't have exact numbers per year of what court use would require, but we anticipate an intensifying over the years, and we're eager to serve that.
Good to know. Thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, and thank you, Dave. I'll add to that, of course, you know, after hours and weekends, it's almost going to be entirely public use, and that is when there is high demand for parking spaces. There's also a handful of spaces over at the courthouse, integrated into the courthouse structure, so this is in addition to those spaces, but there will be some public allocation out of this, when you look at the difference between what is required for the courthouse and what will be here, and the difference between what will be available after hours and on weekends.
Excellent. Thank you.
If I may, just two points that I neglected to mention in my presentation. One, we've already seen that parking lot full, which was really exciting for us, since it's only been open for about a month. It's not always full, but as mentioned, in the evenings, a couple times now, we've seen it full, and certainly, there have been some events where we've seen it fill up. And two is, there have been previous conversations about parking garages, and some direction from council members, and so I wanted to just let you know that Foundation for Senior Living has already said they plan to build the parking garage in a way that could be converted, should parking patterns change, to allow for other uses in that space, so to keep those floors flat. That is something they've been willing to entertain right off the bat, so again, really great partnership there. And with that, if there's, if, at your discretion, Mayor, I think Mr. Hastings would love to speak too.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Mr. Hastings.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for letting me speak to you briefly about our project, we couldn't be more excited about it. We've got three unique partnerships going here. One is for the Foundation for Senior Living, to provide development services for the entire project, also to provide some senior affordable housing, and then also we're property managers. And you may remember us from the construction and ongoing operations of Flagstaff Senior Meadows up on McMillan Mesa. Then we have another partner with us, which is Catholic Charities Community Services, and we're the developer, co-developer with them for Aspen Lofts, which will be a family project. And then, of course, this kind of amazing partnership that's evolved with the City of Flag on the, on the parking garage. FSL has been around for about 47 years. We're an Arizona-only, faith-based nonprofit, and our mission is to provide affordable housing throughout the state, and we've focused a lot on Flag in the last four years, and look forward to presenting a quality project to you in February, when we get all of our funding and other aspirations aligned. And then we intend to break, break ground on the project, for the senior project for San Francisco Square, somewhere around June of next year, and then the parking garage and the Aspen Loft Family Project sometime around the fall of 2023. And happy to answer any questions you have, I know it's getting late, and we do appreciate letting us zoom in, as the case may be. But that's all I had to offer.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor has a question for you.
More of a statement. I just want to thank you for building another project in Flagstaff. The project on McMillan Mesa is beautiful and right next to the urban trail, and I often see seniors walking little dogs on the urban trail. And I know that this project is going to be a really welcome addition to, to Flagstaff, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also going to echo those comments. I'm very grateful for this, these types of projects in our community, these Lytec projects are wonderful, it's really the kind of housing that we need that is affordable and accessible to our community, and to the senior population that will be living in the heart of downtown, envious and excited for them, that's going to be a really nice quality of life that they'll have, and a real walkable lifestyle that they'll, they'll be able to, to live. So yes, just to echo the Vice Mayor's comments, thank you for, for bringing this project forward and, and working with the city, not only with the, the parking needs that we have, but, but for housing our, our seniors and some of our more vulnerable populations at this AMI level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. And yes, we really appreciate the partnership with the city and how you're working with us, and providing options to make sure that we are seeing a successful project that everyone is really excited about, from the, from here and from the community and others, that we're, we're really hit, checking a lot of boxes with this, and we really appreciate you working with us with it, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is that?
Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Assley?
Yeah, just really quickly, I wanted to give a shout-out to something Dave mentioned at the end, and also, Mr. Hastings, I appreciate your role in this. The repurposeability of the parking garage structure is really important, and I appreciate the openness and willingness to consider that, and looking forward to what that looks like 70 years from now. I'm sure we'll all be glad that that functionality was built into the design at this time. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Ms. Puccirelli, could you come up? Correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no commercial in this building, is that correct?
That's correct, and that's part of, I think that when the commercial block building type was envisioned, that, you know, Dan talked a little bit about the ceiling heights, and that 14-foot ceiling height, the ground floor, and then 8-foot minimum above. And I think that was really envisioned to be because it was a mixed-use building, but our code actually doesn't require it to be so. So this will be 100% residential, and that's part of, when I come back, that's part of what we'll talk about, are those floor-to-ceiling heights and getting them more realistic to, to residential.
Right. There's no point in making 14-foot ceilings if it's going to be residential.
Exactly.
So, which kind of leads me into my real question is, what, could you just give us a quick overview of what kind of incentives we're going to give? You mentioned that a little bit light on the parking, you mentioned that, you know, 14-foot versus 8-foot ceilings, are there other things that we kind of should keep in mind as, when we're prepping for this meeting?
I currently have a list of almost 20 deviations from the code. Some of them have to do with how close to the property line we're developing. Again, I think that's sort of tied to, to the frontage types that were envisioned, again, in this location. Again, in this location and the commercial building type, we're thinking originally about commercial, so we're thinking about like storefront, which tends to be very flat. And then we want it pushed up to the sidewalk as much as we can. In this case, because it's residential, we'd like to be able to use porches. Well, porches would require a mofication. And also, because the porches stick out and we're dealing with all these grade issues because it's such a big site and all the change in topography there, we have steps and entries into that porches. So again, asking permission to sort of pull the building back a little bit so that we have room to have these connections to the sidewalk.
Okay, I appreciate that. Don't interpret my questions as being negative in any way. I'm very supportive of this project. I think it's a great project, and I do think it's good that we have a little flexibility to make it work for what it's going to be used for. And that's really the whole idea of tying in back to the form-based code is, you know, make it work. So anyway, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Great.
Yep. Thank you. With that, that was the end of the presenters, correct? Excellent. Well, without further ado, we can move right along here to Agenda Item 12B. This is the Regional Plan Amendment for Carbon Neutrality Discussion.
Mayor, it looked like Mr. Hastings had his hand raised and had one last thing he wanted to say. It may be too late.
Mr. Hastings, are you still there?
Counsel, this is Lindsay Shuby on behalf of Foundation for Senior Living. I think he was just saying goodbye.
Oh, okay. Great.
So, yeah. And we're teasing that this team, we're tackling carbon neutrality by zooming in this evening. We look forward to being in person for our hearing on February 1st, but we're tackling your climate action plan by just zooming in tonight, but look forward to being there in person next time.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Looking forward to it.
Take care.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We had a little run. I didn't expect that to end so quickly, so I apologize. Jenny Niemann, Climate Program Manager, it's really nice to see all of you. I'm here tonight to discuss... Ooh, you don't need to see my notes, probably. I'm here tonight to discuss something a little bit different, an amendment to the regional plan. This has been something we've mentioned before that we've been working on as part of our climate work, but tonight we get to dig in a little bit. This conversation is just for informational purposes. We will be back here on December 7th. This is when we will ask for your adoption of the amendment. That conversation will be led by my friend Sarah Dector, our Comprehensive Planning Manager, who's here tonight. Everything that I'm going to talk about tonight has been done in concert with her and other members of the community development team. We're really grateful for the support of community development and Sarah in this very long process, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission that sees me often on this. And I'm also, you know, happy to say that Sarah, as well as Dan, are here with us tonight. If we need any support, Sarah's always really good about keeping us in line and helping us answer if we get into any technicalities. So, with no further ado, we have a couple different elements of this conversation tonight. We're going to start with background, how we got here today. Then we'll talk about the benefits of this amendment. We'll do a quick refresh on climate action concepts. And then finally, I'll talk about the actual amendment. I know this might seem a bit backwards. We're getting to kind of the meat and what we're actually proposing at the very end, but this process is one that has a lot of layers and sort of background that has led us to be here today. So, the Flagstaff Regional Plan 2030. Starting with the basics, I know this is review for a lot of you, but this is the guiding document for our Flagstaff community. It's a roadmap, helping us to reach the vision of our community. It's adopted by voters. It is a conservation-based plan. You can see in these three themes of the plan. It envisions a community that really protects the environment and aligns with much of what we talk about when we talk about carbon neutrality. This gives us a really good starting point. Climate change in the regional plan is addressed on two pages. It's in the Natural Environment Chapter on Pages 411 and 412. The regional plan adds, has three goals specifically for climate change and climate action. Those three goals are here. They start with two, just because the regional plan is sort of additive across different sections. These three goals address emissions, resilience, and then integrating the best available science. They're a really great place to start and have been really supportive of our work on climate action and carbon neutrality. Here are the actual pages of the regional plan. We talk about it a lot, find it helpful to say, yes, it's here. That orange is me. That's not what the regional plan actually looks like. But this is 411 and 412. Most of the text is narrative on the left page and then the top of the right one. The goals and the policies are in this green box. There are three different sections of goals, or three different goals, and they are followed by policies. So those are the pages that we're speaking about tonight. So while we had this regional plan, this regional plan was passed in 2014, adopted by voters. It had been worked on for many years. I'm sure a lot of you remember that process. After that adoption, our climate work really started to evolve pretty rapidly. Since 2017, we've been working hard to establish climate goals through the first Climate Action Adaptation Plan and then the 2021 Carbon Neutrality Plan. These plans establish climate goals in three areas, which are mitigation, adaptation, and equity. It's really important to note that these are climate goals, not regional plan goals. Regional plan goals might be like the capital G goals, if that makes sense. That's really what we're going to get in tonight. But, you know, the climate plan has established goals that really are kind of confined to that climate plan, if that makes sense. This climate work has been supported by three different city councils and strengthened by the declaration of a climate emergency in June 2020. I want to go to the climate emergency because I think it's really helpful for illustrating the gap between the regional plan and where our work is today. The climate emergency reflects the urgency of climate change, the increasingly dire global situation, and the increasing negative impacts that we anticipate from climate change. The emergency declaration was requested by the public. It was adopted unanimously by council, and it calls on us to really come together to address climate change across the community. Talks a lot about ambition, citywide actions, full community participation. It also talks a lot about vulnerable communities and helping them to prepare for climate change and protecting them from the worst impacts of climate change. It outlines a mobilization that includes big shifts, inclusivity, innovation, and collaboration. These are very big changes. Emergency declaration gave us a very big charge. And so now I'm going to get in, I'm going to switch gears a little bit and get into sort of the amendment and how we got here. The path to carbon neutrality and the climate emergency declaration really requires realigning our systems, requires completely transforming our community and taking really bold and brave action. We've come to see that we need more support for that work from the regional plan. And so now I'm going to talk a little bit about process as it relates to the major plan amendment, leaning on Sarah possibly if we need her. This is where we get in a little bit to the legalities. So, major amendments to the Flagstaff Regional Plan, they're a big deal, rightly so. The major amendment process is triggered when we propose changes to goals or policies in the regional plan. These are not changed lightly, right? Those goals and policies were what was on the green box when I showed the pages earlier in the kind of bottom right side. They are really the backbone of the regional plan. They guide staff, they guide policymakers, other decision-makers, right, as we work. And so this amendment was requested by the Sustainability Commission and then was formally initiated by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We began this process in March of 2021 and have compiled hundreds of pages of documentation and analysis regarding this change. I'll talk a little bit more about that process in a bit. So now, when it comes to need, we have found a great need for this amendment, as I was alluding to before. There's a significant gap between the regional plan's current goals and policies and the city's goals as expressed in our climate planning documents. This is mostly, or I guess best illustrated in the emissions goal that I pointed out before. Goal ENC2 is simply to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This is a goal that is directionally aligned with our climate work, right? But it lacks specificity. It's hard to measure and doesn't have a timeline. And there's also room for better alignment across several other goals and policies that are in the regional plan currently. I'll note here that this gap exists not only because of the city's climate work, it also exists because the sort of international climate situation has gotten more dire, worse. I don't find it productive to spend a lot of time there because it's not necessarily relevant to our local situation, but I think it is here because I think it's why we have a climate emergency, right? Because as the international community has failed to act, the urgency and the potential harm of climate change has only increased, if that makes sense. So having a regional plan, then its goals that aren't exactly aligned with the ambition of our climate goals leads to challenges. It means that maybe decision-makers lack support in the regional plan for things that they may consider or things that they might ask for. Means there may be confusion in the community or even lack of transparency around motivation for certain actions. In short, it means we can't right now point back to the regional plan when making decisions that kind of say, yes, this is where the climate emergency comes in, right? Again, saying we want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions is still aligned with where we're going, but it's quite different, just a reduction. It's quite different than talking about carbon neutrality, if that makes sense. So, benefits. There's a lot of benefits that we see from this amendment. We think that restoring this alignment will help all of us. It will formally recognize the importance of strong climate action, will better support decision-makers, and it will provide transparency and clarity on the city's decisions. It means that we can then point back to the regional plan and say, yes, this reflects the level of ambition and urgency that we declared in the climate emergency declaration and that we've put into practice through the Carbon Neutrality Plan. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about background around, or sorry, I gave some background on why we needed to change, and I'm going to switch gears a little bit to talk about sort of what those changes can be. This is going to take us to kind of, we're going to take a step back to talk about kind of the fundamentals of climate and climate action and why we do this work, because we've worked really hard to make this amendment relevant to those foundations of climate action. So, what do we know about climate change? We know that it is here. We know that the climate is changing at a fast rate. We know that we've already started to see these changes in Flagstaff, and we know that these changes will exacerbate vulnerabilities among our community members and also just put our entire community at greater risk. Compared to today, 2050, we'll look more arid, we'll look hotter, we will have more severe drought, we'll see lower snowpack, we will see more precipitation falling as rain than snow, and we'll see resulting impacts on our fire. We think a little bit more about the right side of this graph, which are sort of, okay, after those natural world changes, how do our social systems change, right? How does the fabric of our community change? We expect to see change in our land use, in our housing, in our tourism, in our economic systems, right? In our health, in our water system. So these are all things we know about. One other wrinkle here is that not all people face the same threats from climate change. Sometimes this can be really simple. We know that vulnerability varies based on age, based on where you live, where you come from, the language you speak. Maybe it varies based on your income or your race or your physical ability, right? Again, sometimes this is simple. We know that older folks and folks with asthma really struggle when it gets hot or when it gets smoky. Sometimes it's really complex. We know that a lot of populations have been marginalized for decades or centuries, and they may struggle to adapt, right? When we maybe see an increase in energy prices or maybe when we have to evacuate. So we know that this sort of web of vulnerabilities and how our different folks in our community respond to climate change and can adapt is really different based on who you are. And we need to analyze and understand that. This is fundamental to our equity work as a climate program, as well as of a city. So that leads into these three types of climate action. Mitigation is reducing our emissions, right? It's saying we can contribute less to climate change by reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. Adaptation is about resilience. It's about preparing our systems and our community members for change. And then equity, which is helping those vulnerable community members focusing on the fair distribution of resources. These three types of action guide all of our climate work. They are illustrated in the Carbon Neutrality Plan. I know y'all are very familiar with these three goals. In the Carbon Neutrality Plan, the mitigation goal is to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030. The adaptation and equity goals have been carried over from the 2018 plan, right? So those have remained consistent between our two climate planning documents. And then we plan to accomplish these goals through nine target areas of action, as this council knows well. These target areas span our neighborhoods, our energy sources, our consumption, and finally, our commitment to carbon neutrality. So, those are sort of the fundamentals, and they really work to, or we have worked really hard to have them inform the proposed amendment. Finally, we can get into that, so thank you for your patience as we got here. So, we have sort of four different categories to the two climate pages in the regional plan, which are 4-11 and 4-12. I'm going to go through all of these. I'm not going to get into the detail of, we're changing this word and this word and this word. That is detailed in a couple different ways in your agenda packet. I also have extra slides if we want to get into that. I'm more than happy to, but for the benefit of everyone tonight, I didn't get into that from the start. So, changes to the narrative are the first thing we'll talk about. That's kind of the wording beforehand. We have proposing revisions to goals, revisions to policies, and then actually adding four new policies. In terms of our updates to the narrative, this part was actually really easy because we have a lot more information than we did in 2014. One of the reasons is, is because as part of our first climate planning process, we worked with the scientists at University of Arizona, the Klimas Center, which is a NOAA-funded research center, to really make a very specific climate profile for Flagstaff and Coquenaux County. That has worked to really inform all of our work. And so here we were to get a little bit more specific about, instead of just talking about the Southwest, to really talk specifically about Flagstaff. We're also adding definitions for the three types of climate action that I talked about before: mitigation, adaptation, and equity. We thought it was really important to define those terms. And finally, we have a cleaned up and consolidated list of possible climate actions. The regional plan talked about a lot of different ways we can take climate action. Since then, we've really kind of narrowed and defined what those climate actions are. They run the gamut, but we kind of have a better summary. That summary is just that list of the nine target areas of the Carbon Neutrality Plan. We're generally doing everything we can through that plan. So this all results in a simpler, cleaner narrative that I think is more understandable, which is obviously a goal anytime we are revising things for the public. And I apologize. That just says what I just said. All right. Changes to Goal 2, and I'm going to go through these by goal area. So under Goal 2, there's the goal, which is about mitigation, then there's associated policies. So, in terms of Goal 2, again, this is on mitigation, our proposed revision will update the goal from reduce greenhouse gas emissions to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030. This is a really important change. It makes it much more specific and really reflects the urgency of the climate emergency, which is where we declared our carbon neutrality goal for the first time, and the level of the work that we need to do. We'll also simplify a policy, clarifying how we'll reduce consumption. This was kind of just a lot of cleanup. We'll also add details about the type of investments that support climate action. We'd like to create two new policies that kind of inform how we'll get this done. One talks about the review of existing regulations and plans. This is actually a policy that already existed in the climate section. It was just specific to adaptation. So we're adding this so that we review our policies and our plans in light of our mitigation goals, right? And in light of reducing emissions. The other new policy is to specify how developments can support carbon neutrality. We don't expect that every development that comes through the staff process or before you is carbon neutral. It's not realistic. What we do want is to understand how developments in our community support our carbon neutrality goals. And so that new policy just clears that up so that there is not confusion about what we're trying to do here. In terms of Goal 3, so this is adaptation, we're actually suggesting that this becomes about adaptation and equity. So the change to the goal actually ensures that the adaptation and equity goals of both of our climate plans are now reflected in this regional plan goal. At the end of the day, this is just about aligning... At the end of the day, this is just about aligning language and consistency. Including equity in these goals and policies is really significant, though. The regional plan, I think, only uses equity once, and we didn't talk about it at all in the climate change pages. And so including it here, we think, is a really important step forward in terms of our conversation about climate change in our vulnerable communities, but also for our whole city. To support this enhanced goal that now includes equity, we're proposing two new policies that will incorporate equity considerations. These policies speak to, first, helping our residents adapt to change, helping them be prepared for the changes that we know are coming. The second talks about how we're going to try to distribute the benefits and the burdens of climate action. All right, this one is where things get a little bit complicated. So Goal Four is about integrating available science into our actions. We're not proposing a change to this goal. The only change we have under here is a change to Policy 4.1. It's a minor change. It really just adds clarity about the assessment of vulnerabilities and risks. We're basically saying, we would like to, you know, make sure we're relying on the available climate science about our climate risks. Just didn't really specify that before. We have one more proposed change, and this falls outside of the climate change section. This change is a little bit different than the rest. It was not in our original proposal when we started preparing this in March and April, but as part of this process, we reviewed every other policy in the regional plan. It's a lot. We worked with our partners again in community development. This review looked for conflict between our existing policies in the regional plan and the amendments. We don't want to have those conflicting. And on this review, we found a potential conflict in the transportation section. Policy T81 talks about efficient transportation connectivity. Sometimes when we talk about efficient transportation, we tend to be talking about the very efficient movement of cars, right? Moving people places in cars very quickly. That was how I read it, right? Then I went and talked to my friends in transportation, and they saw it really different. They said, this is about the grid, right? Which is really good, right? We know that connected, complete grids give people more options for travel, right? Cul-de-sacs aren't necessarily great from a climate perspective. You have to travel really far to maybe go a small distance. And so we kind of had a like, oh, what are we really trying to say here? And so in talking to our transportation staff, we realized that we could actually just add clarity to this policy and that it would actually help all of our goals, right? We actually weren't in conflict, but because of these sort of different interpretations, we realized that saying network connectivity instead of just transportation connectivity would help us a lot to kind of make really clear, we really want a good street grid and a good street network, which again is how our transportation staff was interpreting anyways. And so that is the one change to Policy T81 in the transportation chapter. So that concludes my review of exactly what the policies are and what changes we're making. Oh, I hope to add pictures in here. One of my colleagues was like, you need some pictures. So I'm sorry that that wasn't in this version. Next time, I promise. Before I conclude, I wanted to just walk y'all a little bit through this process to get to this point. We started this conversation this spring. We worked through the Planning and Zoning and Sustainability Commissions. We had a 60 review period in the summer. We did mailings, physical mail mailings. I had a lot of fun at the post office. Daily Sun advertisements, press releases, social media. We tried really hard to get the word out. We had three events. Two were online, one was in person, and then we had an online community feedback forum. We will say that this was in top of talking to some 2,000 residents as part of the Carbon Neutrality Plan process. We might have seen some fatigue of talking about the same topic. We got some questions of, why are you doing this, right? But it's a really, really important thing, and so we tried really hard to clarify how this was different and how in some ways this is an extension of our work on the climate emergency and the Carbon Neutrality Plan through this process. This fall, we've been working a lot with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've had a citizens review session, a public hearing last week, and one tomorrow. We've also continued this fall to talk about this via social media, via online events, pretty much anywhere we can. In terms of next steps, we do have a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow. This is online. It's really easy to join online, but if someone wants to come in person, they can. They can come to the Murdoch Community Center. That is at 4:30. Most of their meetings are at four, but with the holidays, we move things around a little bit. Then on December 7th, I will be back here with Sarah, led by Sarah, luckily, and that will be the full hearing to really go through, you know, if council would like to adopt this or not, and that as well. It would be up for a vote. So those are the next steps. Thank you for digging into the weeds with me tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Thank you so much, Jenny and the whole team for all the work on this. I know this is not an easy lift getting here. So, I mean, aside from the pictures, it was a really great presentation. But yeah, open it up to the rest of council if you have any questions at this time or anything else. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, I'd like to make a comment and then a comment about my comment. My comment is, I don't have any comments. My comment about that is that, as Mr. Clifton knows, I'm not shy about providing edits. There was one edit, or one thing that recently came through council, and I had five pages of comments, and I don't have any comments, which translated means you guys did a very good job. So that's my main message. Good job. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember McCarthy.
Councilmember Shumani?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jenny and Sarah, for your work on this, and same, Andrew, of course, for your leadership on this. But thanks to everybody that was a part of this. This is a big lift, and I think that this is very important. Sometimes I get really caught up in the weeds of the work and forget to almost take a step back, but this is definitely taking us a step back in a good way. And so I just want to appreciate you and your team for working on this and everyone that's been involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumani. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, everybody who's worked so hard on this. I'm so glad the commissions have had a chance to vet it. You know, I just want to take a step back and acknowledge that this conversation is coming at a time when we have public speakers coming forward at the beginning of meetings begging for our help for their street on how to relate to these big changes and these micro-changes that some of our residents are being burdened with. Watching your presentation, Jenny, and I just got this news alert from CAF about Snowball postponing its opening weekend this year. The quote here is, "Weather is too warm on the mountain to efficiently blow snow and have it stick." Snowball general manager Rob Lynn says, there's just been a lot of warm temperatures, and we need 32 degrees or lower to make snow. He adds, "We just haven't seen a whole lot of that so far." So we're well out of the realm of talking theoreticals here, and this isn't about data points in some international report. This isn't about what's going on in Glasgow. This is about what's happening here in Flagstaff. This is about our community. This is about our economic resiliency as well as the very livelihood and shelter of our residents. And so I'm very much looking forward to tackling these thorny issues in the regional plan. I just want to take a moment to ask you, Jenny, since this is going to be a heavy lift and it's a big deal that we're diving into this thing and tinkering with it, was there anything else that you guys discussed throughout this process that didn't come through your own filter before it came to us? Are there things that you're leaving off the table that maybe should also be considered, but for whatever reason, your team or others determined it didn't rise to the level of the actions that we need to take? I just want to make sure we don't leave any stone unturned here and want to give you guys the opportunity to point out maybe some other things that we could do if we're doing this that might not be as large or significant as the presentation you just gave, but things that we could do some house cleaning up with anyway, such as that one transportation item we noted.
Sure.
It sounds like pretty thorough, so I'm not expecting you to have a long list, but this is your chance to let us know of any other little stuff that's on your radar.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Aslan. I, you know, you're right. We did a review of every policy in the regional plan, and I'll, you know, open up to Sarah if you saw things, or Nicole has been a huge part of this project, obviously. And Nicole, if there's anything that you can recall, we're changing a lot within those climate, you know, plan pages. We did keep it to those pages besides the transportation policy. You know, Sarah and I have started talking, and Sarah has already started the regional plan process, as you know, right? For the next addition. You know, some folks said, why wait, right? I think it's really important that we get this now to support our work now, particularly with the tight timeline of the carbon neutrality. I think with the next regional plan, there's like an incredibly amazing and fun opportunity, right? To really think about that, to think about the climate emergency and the housing emergency and how those things all work together, right? So Sarah or Nicole, if you want to add anything, but no, I don't think we saw anything that we kind of left unturned, particularly within the climate plan pages. That was really our scope. We could certainly rewrite a regional plan, right? Just from a carbon neutrality perspective, but that wasn't necessarily our goal, if that makes sense.
And it's okay if you guys were so thorough that there's nothing left to discuss. That's perfect. I just wanted to make sure we are talking about everything and not just something from a certain filter point upward. So any other thoughts on that?
Yeah.
Nicole has her hand raised.
Hello. Go ahead, Sarah.
You go. You're on the screen.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director, and thank you so much for this opportunity and conversation. And if I may, this opportunity just to express my gratitude to Jenny and Sarah because this is a huge lift. We did not know that going in, how heavy of a lift it is. And to your question, Councilmember Aslan, and thank you for that, I think that the goal here is that this is that tipping point and that starting point, and with the regional plan process coming forward, we're really anticipating that this will help shape that direction. And I look forward to seeing what the community's voices in this as well as what our opportunities are. We have a lot of work to do still in analyzing our policies and codes to better support our carbon neutrality goals, and so I think in sequencing, we are in the perfect spot.
Good to hear. Did Sarah, you want to say something?
Yes, I will say, thank you, Councilmember Aslan. I will say that the meeting on December 7th that council will be having will be your official public hearing. We will go through that regional plan analysis, including the goals that didn't quite rise to the level of T8.1, where they have some inherent conflict, but that we know how it will be resolved, and the language was clear enough that staff and the public didn't see a need to change them. That's been put together over time. This regional plan was sort of designed to throw in everything and every kind of dream we have, and it didn't really prioritize them or make a lot of effort to figure out what the trade-offs would be. It just put them all together in a bucket and handed them to staff and council and said, let's go figure out how this works. Now that we've had about eight years of experience of implementing that kind of policy document, I know there are changes that the community and staff and council all want to see in the way this kind of information comes together in the plan. That was just too big a bite to take on with one major plan amendment. I already tell, as Jenny and Nicole said, a very compelling tale of woe when someone wants to embark on a major plan amendment and remind them that it's a very rigorous process, a very fast process, and that it's designed to be that way. So what we hope is that when we have more time in that two- to three-year period where we're really updating the plan comprehensively, we'll be able to take on a few more of those things. This process certainly highlighted a few, particularly it highlighted the fact that equity is so little discussed in the plan. It's very hard to have a policy that works with equity in our plan right now because it doesn't make trade-offs. It doesn't talk about different areas of the city differently. There was, at the time, a feeling that doing that would put neighborhoods against neighborhoods, and what we've discovered is really what that would have done is highlight our vulnerabilities in a way that we've experienced in the last eight years. So I think we will look at those things in the comprehensive update, which is really the more appropriate time to do so. Does that answer your question? You're on mute.
You're on mute. Councilmember Aslan?
I got that out of the way, finally, at the end of the evening here.
You're so close to making it to the end.
It's got to happen. No, that totally answers my question. I never meant this to be a fishing expedition. I just want to leave you guys with encouragement not to leave any stone unturned, and if we're going to do this, let's do it right, and let's be comprehensive about it. And, you know, that might include places where we can mention equity more, since we're going through this process. Maybe it's appropriate to think about that. I don't want this to balloon into something even that much larger than it already is, but let's, I want to encourage us to do it once and to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Anyone else, council? Otherwise, we will see this back here December 7th. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Let there be light, right? Mic is on, yes. Well, thank you so much. You know, we just saw an amazing work putting together this proposed regional plan amendment. I always just want to, of course, with gratitude and appreciation of work, is also give voice to mindful efforts in providing a lens of inclusivity, diversity, equity has been mentioned earlier, and access, acronym IDEA, right? That's how ideas evolve is. And of course, one of the goals mentioned is to have full community participation. So and you probably heard me say this more than once or twice or three times, but I urge you and encourage you to please engage our neighborhoods, our neighborhood association. Ms. Deb Harris is in the house. HOH, the business community. We have diverse business groups and organization in town, and also providing them space in terms of an inventory of their existing sustainability and carbon neutrality measures that they, some companies have been implementing in their respective workplaces in the last 30 years. So if we have that conversation, then we will have the business community as active participants and stakeholders of the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. Look forward to seeing it December 7th.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. That brings us down to discussion item 12C. This is the discussion and direction on credentialed wage.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, while we're getting ready for this, I will note, there is no staff presentation on this. This has had some informal discussion along the way, and I think it's before you tonight to further that discussion and try to gauge if there's council support to move forward with this consideration. I'm not sure if our legal counsel has anything to add to what I just said, but I would invite that opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, City Manager Clifton. That is correct. This is the opportunity for council to determine, unless it would be a majority of council, to give direction on whether or not they want any sort of credentialed wage ordinance drafted to be presented to council for further consideration.
Thank you, City Attorney. So I'll open this up, and then we'll take a public comment, and then we can have the discussion further. But basically, what we're looking at tonight is to determine whether to pursue writing an ordinance that then we can have a more thorough public discussion on. an ordinance that then we can have a more thorough public discussion on. So we're not making any votes tonight. What we're doing is seeing if we're willing to have a document drafted, that then we can have a more thorough discussion about whether our public contracts should be setting forth a credentialed wage so that we are paying appropriate living wages for the credentials that the trade skills people bring to the table. This helps in multiple regards. It helps with the greater quality of work. It ensures that people are not paying money under the table as contractors and ensures that we can detect tax fraud that occurs with. In fact, I looked up the statistics just this last week, and there's $8.4 billion in the United States worth of undercutting pay of wage theft in the trade skills to within the trades also not classifying their employees appropriately, where they're independent contractors rather than W-2 employee. And it is a real issue, and I want to make sure that we are good stewards of the public dollars as well as ensuring that those public dollars are going towards paying living wages for folks that have earned it, who've gotten the credentials as journeyman or whatever other credential they may have. So that's what we're here to discuss, is really, should we move forward and draft an ordinance and then have a public discussion so that way we can get the input of many individuals in our community who have an interest in this. So with that opening remark, I would like to go to our first speaker, Fabian Sandoz.
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Fabian Sandoz, and I'm Regional Manager for the State of Arizona and New Mexico for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Tonight, we're here to request counsel for further discussion to consider and explore a study to promote local hire, a credential apprenticeship program to address our growing need for our skilled workforce on city-funded projects. Also along on the same lines on city-funded projects, to study different types of enforcement or regulations of labor and tax laws to ensure fair competition and responsible contractor With that said, I got a couple of my colleagues to help me answer any questions you might have. We'll be more than happy to relate on those subjects.
Thank you, Fabian. Do we have any questions right now? Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much for being here. Do similar ordinances, can you tell me where else they exist?
Not in the state of Arizona. There's other states that have them, but right now, what we're looking for is a study to see what we can get on contractors to have fair practices. I mean, we are seeing a big amount of tax fraud in the southern area. We don't like that to happen for flagstaff. It's unfair for legitimate contractors that are abiding by the law with other contractors coming in. But on top of that, we'd like to promote apprenticeships and provide that youth the opportunity of the skilled workforce and consider construction not as a job, but as a career.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. You mentioned about a study about credential apprenticeship program. Can you, I may be aware of what that means, but for the benefit of council and the public, could you describe what a credentialed apprenticeship program is specifically to your sector, carpentry?
Okay, credential apprenticeships are Department of Labor certified apprenticeship. But what I mean by credential is by the credentials and the training the apprenticeship offers, and then the length of outreach that the apprenticeship do in high schools and trade schools and any other organizations to promote those careers. That's what I mean by credentials, certified, skilled, and trained apprentices.
Just a follow-up, Mr. Mayor. So are you talking about additional job training after a high school graduation? Is that what apprenticeship means to the field of carpentry?
Absolutely. After apprenticeship, well, I can speak for our trade. For our trade, our apprenticeship is affiliated with Central Arizona College and Gateway Community College, which the students, while they're on our apprenticeship, they'll gain credits, and when they graduate, they're a little bit shy of a bachelor degree. So that allows them to continue their further education if they choose to. If they choose to show a career as project manager, project engineer, superintendent, estimator, even architect, they will be able to continue that, further that career.
So is it accurate to interpret that apprenticeship is on-the-job training focusing on a specific trade, say from carpentry, and that can evolve to a higher level of carpentry and woodwork and even can evolve to construction management?
That is correct. We don't consider it as a job, we consider it as a career.
So in your experience of apprenticeship with carpentry, how many years is the apprenticeship program that you have?
Well, we have different branches. On our carpentry side, there's a four-year apprenticeship, which they are in our training center four times a week, I mean, four times a year for a whole week. And the rest of the time, they're on-the-job training and being paid while they learn. And that's a four-year apprenticeship. Our millwright, which specializes more on power plants, conveyors, and airport work, that's a five-year apprenticeship program because the math that is involved on that program, it involves thousands of an inch. So it's a more, it's a more critical program because of the work they do and the catastrophes that could happen if something fails.
One final question, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah. So do you think with this proposed, what we have today is, you know, future discussion of credentialed, what is it called? Discussion and direction on credentialed wage. So how it will relate to your apprenticeship program?
With apprenticeship and skill and training, that's what promotes the wage because a skilled, trained, and safe workforce speaks for itself.
Thank you, sirs.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Make sure. Councilmember Schimoni.
Thank you, Mayor. So can you remind me, was this a fair, or are you looking for like three head nods? Can you just remind me?
We're looking for a majority to have the city attorney's office look into what potential options that we can do to support a credentialed wage, support required apprenticeships potentially within our procurements of certain construction contracts, to basically continue to pursue what we had discussed at the executive session last week, but really understand the breadth of it and what we can do to support a fair wage on public contracts, and if we can also see about potentially apprenticeships and whatever else might be able to be pursued in such an ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that, Mayor. And thank you all for being with us today and speaking up and testifying. I really appreciate it. I want to be really clear and say I fully support what it is that we're talking about. I really, really do. But kind of going to what the vice mayor asked. Oh, that's kind of where I was going with this conversation. I'll let Sterling jump in.
Sterling.
Thank you, and thank you for your question, Councilmember Schimoni. Thank you for your answer, Mayor. More specifically to the process on June 8th was the moment when council, this item was put on through the charter authority for the city manager to put an item on as requested by the mayor. There were three council members, at least three at that point, that said were at least willing to, you know, have the discussion at another meeting. This is that other meeting. I know Mayor referenced an executive session last week. Obviously, we wouldn't be referencing any of the specific legal advice given in that executive session here in the open meeting, but the process tonight, the procedure tonight, is for four council members to give direction for an ordinance to be drafted for consideration. If council gives that direction, that would be the next step. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, City Attorney. And I'll just clarify, June 8th was when we gave direction to do some research into what the realm of possibilities might be. So now we're looking at the next step, which would be to draft an ordinance and direct the city attorney's office to do so.
So if I could just wrap up my comments, I'll just say, you know, I struggle with this, given what we learned last week, which I can't speak to in executive session, but because this hasn't been done in the state, there are legal ramifications potentially that I'm not going to talk to. But Mayor, I just personally am struggling with this one, just given everything that, you know, you and I and all of us up here know about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schimoni. I will state that we had one meeting about this for a very short amount of time, and it was just last week. So I think we need to do our due diligence personally to research this ourselves, speak with stakeholders, understand what's going on here, and to have an ordinance that we can actually bounce off of and identify with real words. What are we looking at here? What potentialities may exist by putting this forward? So I don't think we have done our homework well enough, and this is an extremely important thing to be, for me at least, to see what we can do and delve into this and see what options are available, and to draft an ordinance so that way we have a document we're actually talking about rather than just being in a conceptual world. So, Vice Mayor.
I need some clarification because this says, well, you've talked about an ordinance, but then you talked about a study, and I'm wondering whether they're connected or one leads to another one, or what exactly it is that we're talking about here?
Our way is to lead, one thing will lead to another, but to study and promote apprenticeship and on local hire, because the last thing that we want is out of state companies bringing their own workforce to work here. So that's why we're looking to for a study and see what that's going to do. Same with tax and labor laws. See what we can do to assure that that is protected and we have fair competition among contractors.
So basically, also more of a legal study into what we can do. So that's, yeah.
And I would like to jump in here as the city attorney, just to state that I would not be commissioning a study from my office with an individual consultant or anyone. That would simply be the drafting of an ordinance. I will clarify that when this first came from the mayor through the process of going on an agenda, getting three, approving of it, it was classified as a prevailing wage discussion, then morphed into a credentialed wage discussion, which many would argue are one and the same. But there would be no study where an individual independent contractor or anyone else would do an individual study. It would simply be the drafting of an ordinance that you as council members would consider, and obviously, that would not happen unless four of you tonight said we want to draft, have you draft an ordinance to have us consider.
Thank you. And we have had, the city attorney's office has done some preliminary research into this and has already devoted time, so it's not like we're starting really from full scratch here for potential ordinance. Did we draft it? Councilmember Schimoni.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say, I have some legal questions, and I'm like debating whether or not I want to ask if we move into executive session, just given how long this, today's meeting's already been. But I guess I don't necessarily like the idea of moving forward with an ordinance at this point, just given how that might, you know, set off a ripple effect across the state that isn't going to be beneficial to the city. But I'm open to a study, I'm open to exploration, I'm open to, you know, the things we're talking about, but in terms of the city taking a step towards putting out an ordinance, even if it's a draft ordinance, I think I just have concerns, but I'm one of seven. So I respect that, and I respect this council body and the majority's decision, but I'm just kind of, I guess, airing my concerns with all of you and kind of maybe you can help me work through these things. Thank you.
Councilmember Solis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Solomon, our city attorney, please feel free to interrupt me if I'm going on, if I'm crossing the line of legal advice here. I mean, I've done my homework and some research on this, you know, credential rate, prevailing wage, what is it called, Davis Bacon Law? And I actually even went far as pulling out the latest report on wage determination for Cocononi County for bricklayers, for electricians, plumbers, carpenters, laborers, and so on and so forth. There's the federal, there's the rate and the fringe benefits. So I'd like to see a discussion focus on what the gentleman have mentioned here is focus on apprenticeship. If can we create a local policy, building and strengthening apprenticeship programs that create and galvanize quality pipeline for trades workers, whether it's in the fields of carpentry, electrical, and I'm already doing some effort in establishing the pipe trades apprenticeship training center here. And with a focus on keeping, you know, jobs local, I mean, when we have major projects going on, let's say, you know, we have real estate flag going on, we have ADA projects going on, can we, do we have the capacity to hire local workforce? And that's where the place I want to come from if we want to move forward with credentialed apprenticeship program.
I can quickly respond to that. Councilmember Solis, Mayor and council, that is not what is contemplated by this credentialed wage ordinance discussion or prevailing wage ordinance discussion. That would be something separate involving, where you're talking about a local preference, which is a separate issue entirely with respect to a city-driven effort, if you will, to, you know, regulate those with certain credentials, making sure that they are included in or chosen first in public contracts, which I'm just going to state very clearly. chosen first in public contracts, which I'm just going to state very plainly, local preference is not something that is allowed under the law, period. So.
But as part of certain credentialed wage discussions in other cities and ordinances includes requiring a certain level of apprentices on-site for construction. So that has been included in certain credentialed wages and prevailing wages in other cities or other states in the nation, particularly, I believe, in a city in Indiana. But I won't get into that. So this is something that can be included in there. It can be part of this whole discussion, just like the tax fraud aspect, to be able to audit the books. That's part of all the credentialed wage has always been that, you know, well, with most laws, if this part, section is determined to be problematic legally, it doesn't completely negate the whole document. So in most of these prevailing wage-type laws, it includes tax fraud, to be able to look over the books to make sure money's not being paid under the table, which means that we're not using our own city public dollars towards not paying social security and not paying Medicare because they're not going towards, because it's going under the table. It's a situation where they're not saying, "Hey, we're paying $25 for an hour for this laborer," when they're actually spending $15 and then taking the cream off the top as a company. It also has sometimes the apprenticeship part into it. So we can have this document that includes all of this in it as an ordinance, and then we'll, with that on paper, now can debate each section and discuss it as a council body with the public included, to understand how we want to go forward. So all of the things that we've been discussing here tonight have been in, a single ordinances in other localities. So I just want to point that out. This is, those aren't necessarily separate things. So if we can move forward with an ordinance that includes that, as Councilmember Solis had suggested, includes the tax fraud aspects of this, then we can have a more thorough discussion. And I think part of the problem we're having here is that we are talking conceptually without a document in front of us to say, "Hey, this is what we're actually looking at." So that's what I'm looking for, is really a document that we can look at all those options and then-
Vice Mayor.
-have a more thorough debate. Yes?
So I'm just not connecting the dots here. I'm really struggling with this, and maybe you can help piece this together a little bit more. Who's drafting this ordinance for us to, this draft ordinance? Who's writing it?
That's what we're asking, seeing if we give direction tonight to city attorney to do.
And are you insinuating that the city doesn't properly tax and is paying wage earners under the table?
No, not at all. This is to ensure that private contractors and what we are-
I don't understand, the dots are not connecting here for me. I don't understand why this is-
Maybe we should, I could, let me kick it to Matt Kapalby, so he can maybe explain in a different manner.
Are we, Mayor, councilmembers, or am I addressing Councilman Osland?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Councilman, my name is Matthew Kapalby. I reside here in the Flagstaff area and have the pleasure of knowing several of you. Subsequently, what we have right now in the current circumstances is you have subcontractors of the general contractors on public jobs that are 1099 or misclassifying people and then paying them direct cash. They'll invoice the city legitimately. The city, of course, you know, is paying the invoices. But then in turn, that subcontractor, excuse me, or labor broker in a lot of cases, will then pay cash to a lot of the workers that are misclassified. It's very difficult to track, too, and we actually have people on job sites that are documenting a lot of this activity. It's not the city that is committing tax fraud, it's the city that is the victim of tax fraud by unscrupulous contractors and subcontractors that often get the jobs. And I do want to take a little opportunity, just to give you the context, and I also want to take an opportunity to take the state legislature to task and to address some of Councilman Shimonie's concerns, is the state legislature, under the current law and under your legal concerns, has created an environment that has allowed this to happen and for this to prosper, this type of activity, where you have kind of a Wild West, no holds barred type of construction market that has allowed tax fraud and cash pay to flourish, even on public-funded projects. And in turn, when cities often do try to do, take prudent and practical action, the legislature then says, "No, you can't do that." Well, you might have legal concerns, but they're not necessarily just concerns. What's right and what the legislature has codified are not necessarily correct or the right thing to do. In this case, it's to make sure that we have the appropriate oversight over how our tax money is being spent and how our employees and workers that our tax dollars are providing for are being treated fairly and appropriately. And I really have to commend, you know, the mayor and the other folks that have researched this matter, to come up with this type of, again, unprecedented kind of concept on a credentialed wage. Because we're trying to be as creative and practical as we can, because we don't want to impact the people that hire, the proper players that hire our workers negatively. But we also want to make sure that they're doing things responsibly. So, yes, to Councilman Shimonie's concerns, this is unprecedented, too. And the city of Flagstaff has always been at the cutting edge and the vanguard of many of these types of initiatives, and I commend you for it, too. And it may have some greater effects. I know several of the other cities, I had lunch today with Mayor Booker of Tempe, and later this week, we're meeting with Mayor Romero of Tucson to discuss exactly these same issues. But they're looking to Flagstaff to set the example. And it's a great, I think, a great opportunity for that to happen. It shows courage and who's standing up for the deeds and issues that working families really need, too. And we're, I think we're handling it in a very prudent, practical fashion. We're not being reactionary. We're not trying to shove anything through. We want to be as deliberative and proper as we possibly can in these matters, too, to make sure that, you know, we're doing it right. And I think if there are legal challenges, in my opinion, great, you know, because, again, what's right and what's legal are not necessarily always the same, you know, as we've seen over, you know, throughout history. Two, and the legislature, again, has created an environment that has created a Wild West kind of no-holds-barred market that compromises our worker's safety, our workers' pay, and has set the environment for extraordinary, we're talking tens of hundreds of millions of dollars committed in tax fraud, just in the construction market alone per year. And it's been pulling teeth. We've been at this now for close to five years, trying to get some elected entity to take action. Legislature isn't going to touch it. You know, we can't get the Attorney General to do anything about it. Two, the Industrial Commission, the Register of Contractors, I mean, we've been just hammering away. So what we have done is we're going to the cities, because the cities are responsive, they're effective, and they're showing the leadership that we're not getting at the state level. So I want to, again, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to rant. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. I found that helpful. I do think that, without taking sides on the assertions, what I'm recognizing right now is that these are enormous assertions that are being made. I don't feel prepared at this time, myself, to champion something that I just personally don't understand enough. So that's where I'm leaning on this. And I just, we don't have any draft language. I don't understand who's coming up with the language on the ordinance that we're going to be asked to vote on. I'm still not understanding how the city attorney's office is going to be the one to generate this document.
There is a dra, for example, there is a draft that was voted down by a 4-3 vote in Phoenix just a couple weeks ago on the razor's edge. So there are ordinances being circulated through this process, and we have samples and examples. It's not starting from scratch. That would be able to then have a more thorough discussion and-
None of that is in the back. I haven't had any chance to-
Councilmember, I'm not finished with my sentence. That we have the opportunity to use as a template, allow for the city attorney to assess, address concerns that he may have with it, so that way we can then have a good debate. That's not going to happen next week. It's not going to happen next month. But allow us the time to then think about this more thoroughly. But this isn't starting from scratch. This is something that has been going through the processes in other cities.
Mayor, if I may, to, just to speak to Councilmember Aslan's concerns. Yes, sir, I appreciate and understand your position, and that's what, that's actually where we're at, is what you've stated, is we think that there are issues here regarding credentialed wages and tax fraud and such that need to be studied, that need to be looked at, and we're just asking that that process be initiated, and that we're asking for your support to initiate the process. We're not asking for anything immediate, and we are at your disposal, especially after this meeting, and from here on out, to sit down and with you, Councilmember Aslan and all the rest, to discuss this at length and provide you national data from municipalities all around the country that have also addressed similar issues in a very practical and creative way, too. And so, yeah, we're just asking for you to look at this and then, you know, kind of get a process going. And we'll be more than happy, like I said, to sit down and provide you all of the necessary data and examples and templates that you can follow from here on out. We're just asking for support of initiating a process to address this issue. And hopefully, what we're hoping for is the development of an ordinance that will flesh out these issues that we've discussed.
Mayor, may I reply?
Yes, go ahead. And then Councilmember McCarthy has his hand up.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm happy to meet with you at any time. It's unfortunate we haven't had a chance to sit together, sit down together before now. I, what I also hear here is that there could be litigation at the end of this staring contest, and I'm sorry, but I'm just not prepared to push that ball down the hill without having a better understanding personally, myself, of what we're setting in motion. So I'm a no right now, but please wrap back around with me, and we can have these conversations. I'd love to understand all this more.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that the focus here is not about apprenticeships. It's really about paying higher wages to people that are in certain professions and that are certified in certain ways. And this is analogous to the Davis Bacon Act, which is oftentimes used for federal contracts. It's also, as has been mentioned here, it's about audits of procedures, audits of the books. And I want to point out that we did get a letter, I think it was a couple months ago, when this kind of first came up, from the woman that runs Housing Solutions. And you, councilmembers, may want to go back and look for that email. But basically, what she said is that they had done some projects that were done under these type of rules, and the extra cost and the extra frustration that was involved was extremely significant. And she strongly urged us to not get involved in mandating this, and that she was saying when she's trying to build housing projects, it could be a real, make it a lot harder for them to get things done. So I'm just telling you what she said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Shimonie.
I'll jump back in. You know, Matt, when you mentioned other cities, you got me really excited, because I was thinking, okay, great, we don't need to be the example, we don't need to be the poster child here. But it sounds like, again, everyone's waiting for someone to take that first step. And it's not that I'm opposed to taking that first step. I really hope you're hearing that from me tonight. It's just that we're, the city of Flagstaff is currently in litigation regarding our minimum wage with the state, and I just don't feel comfortable pushing this and taking that step and jeopardizing our position at the state on that litigation. I think that's just where I'm at, Mayor. I know that's not what you want to hear, and I'm sorry to those who want to move forward. Again, I'm one of seven, but I just, I just don't feel comfortable jeopardizing our position and our current litigation that we've worked so hard to get to this point, and our staff has done great. Once that's over, we can talk, in my opinion. But anyways, those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, and to your point, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilman Shimonie, we, yeah, we concur. We don't want to put you in any type of other, you know, bad, untenable position that jeopardizes another case, especially that deals with wages. But also to Councilman McCarthy's points, what we're after right now, equally, if not more so important, is actually the tax fraud and cash pay issue, of which a credentialed wage and the requirements that Mr. McCarthy and Ms. Solis also identified, is that it leads to accountability. And, and to Councilman McCarthy, we have videos, we could show you right now, public housing projects, no OSHA oversight, no safety, and cash pay, that we're talking to employees. We have videos, documentation. These are projects going on right now, public housing projects, where they're paying cash. So I always challenge anybody, especially the public housing folks, that say, "Oh, it's going to add to the cost." It's not. From a professional and output position, it will not. Because often, when you have people that are credentialed knowing what they're doing, they're showing up on time with their equipment, ready to go, and they come in usually ahead of schedule, under budget. When you have people that are paying, they're getting paid cash, you're lucky if they show up on time. If they show up, you're lucky if they show up sober. And two, and then you don't have to go out and try to find people, you spend so much more time. We can provide you multiple projects that, public projects that have gone over, crossed, and had, and due to poor work, had to be corrected. Two, because of the lack of appropriate oversight. No one wants oversight, and that's what they're citing, Councilman McCarthy. They're citing being accountable as to seeing where our tax dollars go and how our people are being treated. But we gave a presentation to some reasonable legislators recently and to the Attorney General's office with these videos. These are criminal acts. This is criminal tax fraud, criminal safety violations, not civil safety violations. We're talking criminal violations of where people are getting hurt, and we have severe issues that deal on these cash pay projects of human trafficking, labor trafficking, too. So the issue is very broad. The wage aspect is just one aspect of it that helps kind of take care of many other issues. You're killing one, or killing many birds with one stone in that regard, because you have that level of accountability, and it is, it could be very simple. We're going to share with you the ordinance from Portage, Indiana. It's one page. It is a one-page, simple ordinance, and if you're not in compliance with many of the issues that we do, that city will pull your building permit and suspend your project until you're in compliance with credentialed people that are licensed, bonded, insured, too, and that are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And they have a certified payroll. They're not misclassifying employees.
Thank you, Matt.
It's that simple. So anyway, yes.
I appreciate the-
I want to address your concern.
The extra concerns, and it would be nice if you could share the Indiana ordinance with the others. That would be great. But I wanted to go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I see it, there are two connected things. One is the wage, and it is like Davis Bacon, where if there's a federal contract, there's- there's a set minimum wage for the contractors working on that, except this is statewide. And then there's the, kind of the resulting fraud that happens because you can't have that kind of certification in the state of Arizona. And so I'm wondering, I'm wondering if there's a middle ground here where instead of going straight to ordinance, maybe, let me just throw this out there. A few of us who are interested in this could work with folks in Phoenix and folks in Tucson on, I guess, looking into the, and I'm, I'm guessing that you've probably already done this, into the legalities around what the legislature has done and the legalities of communities asserting this kind of, these kinds of ordinances in their communities. I mean, rather than us going straight to an ordinance, maybe, I guess, additional conversations to bring more of us up to speed with what you already know so well.
Yes, Fabian, if you'd like to address that. And let's, yeah.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't not, we will, our intention is not to jeopardize the city or put the city in an awkward position at all. Our intention is, like in my initial statement, I mentioned enforcement or regulations to put some sort of a look and oversight on all of this. If we can, if we can start looking at that and collectively work together on this, we can come with a solution. We can come with, come up with something and not jeopardize anything else. So that's, that's, that's what I, I wanted to say on, on that aspect. We can, we're more than willing to cooperate and work with you and show you what we have and then move on from that point.
Thank you. Others on council? All right. Well, we're going to have, we need to make a decision here. And I see that there is a couple of options, but let's start with the bigger one. And I want roll call on this. Are we going to, are you in favor of draft, starting to draft an ordinance that addresses these concerns that have been presented tonight? And if we could get a roll call on that, please, when you have a chance.
Can I call a point of order? Is this, is this an issue that calls for a roll call vote? Or is this a, just a verbal agreement? I guess I'm looking for Sterling to weigh in.
Happy to do so, Madam Vice Mayor and Mayor and Council. This is one where we simply state is their direction. There is no vote that takes place here tonight. It's, is there, are there four councilmembers in support of moving this forward to the next step? That's what the question is that needs to be asked.
All right. So we have four-
If the mayor, mayor-
Yes, Sterling, go ahead.
Absolutely entitled to do that as the chair of the meeting.
Could you repeat that, Sterling? You broke up there for a sec.
My apologies. Mayor, as the chair of the meeting, you are absolutely entitled to ask each member of council individually whether they want to move forward this item or not.
Okay. Thank you. Vice mayor.
I would like more information and to have some additional conversations with you and possibly others, rather than going straight to asking the attorney, attorney general, ooh, I've promoted you, Sterling, rather than going straight to asking our attorney to draft an ordinance.
Understood.
So I, I just want to clarify for the record, that would be a no on moving forward with an ordinance right now, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Stacy?
Mayor, would you like me to run through each person then?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we heard from vice mayor. Next on my list is councilmember Shumoni.
I'm a no at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy?
No.
Councilmember Aslan?
I'm a no at this time. I don't have enough information.
Councilmember Salas?
I'm a no this time, but will sue, but will pursue another effort in building, building and strengthening apprenticeship programs.
Mayor DC?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
No at this time.
Then a secondary question is going to be, do we want to direct city attorney to take further, do further legal research into this subject? Rather than drafting an ordinance, would we like to get more legal research done by council rather than, or done by city attorney's office without closing off the discussion? So roll call on that.
Mr. Mayor, one, one thing that I, I would like, just as a point of order to, to indicate here, that I've done the research that I need to do already and reported to council on that already. There really is no additional research that I could do unless you and council come back with another question. The question on this was specifically to a prevailing wage or a credentialed wage. As you referenced, other cities and towns across the state of Arizona have considered something similar that have failed by a narrow margin, and that is specifically what we were looking at here tonight. It would have to be a different question that came back, but this one I have researched and reported back to you on already.
Councilmember Shumoni.
Just a thought, because I, I do think that this council is open to exploring different ideas on this topic. And, and I really appreciate the community partners that we have in, in Flagstaff. You know, I, I understand that we might not be the town that leads the charge for the state, at least in the short term. But, but I, I do think councilmember Salas is onto some really good ideas. And mayor, I know you have a bunch of good ideas. I don't know if we need more legal exploration on, on the topics we've talked about tonight, but what comes to my mind is maybe a, a fair question that, you know, kind of like a restart, you know, let this one go and then come back to it through a new approach, a new, a new direction. That's how I can, at least in my mind, that's how I can see this moving forward. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm just wondering if procedurally, I realize we just took a vote on this, so I have to study the rules of procedure. Actually, I don't. We've got Sterling. But could we table this and like, bring it back in two weeks? That would give certain councilmembers that want to research, do their own research, talk to friends that are in the audience tonight and things. So Sterling, could this be tabled for, say, two weeks and then brought back?
No, there was a direction given already on a specific issue of credentialed wage or prevailing wage, as it was originally printed, presented back in June. As I've indicated, I don't have any more information that I can provide to you as a council on this. There's no additional research that, that I would need to do. And for that reason, it would need to come back, just as councilmember Shumoni mentioned, as a different question, a different approach to it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, well, we can move along then. I just want to say one thing, and that is, city staff told me one time before I ran for mayor. It was one of the most important advices I think I've gotten. And that is, there's no can or cannot do something on council. It's what's, what risks you're willing to take to do the right thing. And I just want to point that out before we move on. So thank you all, and we will move on to the next discussion item.
Thank you.
Agenda item 13 is general public participation. Do we have anyone at this time?
No, mayor.
All right. Agenda item 14, informational items, two from mayor, council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. I will start online with councilmember Aslan.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, mayor. A couple of things. We had a good meeting, and, and we being myself, councilmember Sweet, councilmember Salas, teams from our economic development, and the city manager was there, along with county manager Steve Peru, and also Josh Mayer from the, from NAU. And I probably am missing a couple of folks, but it was a big group. And we discussed the small business micro grant that we have funded through our ARPA funding of $360,000. And we're hoping that the county and NAU join us in, in a partnership in funds, in putting funds into a, a greater fund of which the DBA would help administer to the public, obviously not focusing on the downtown businesses, but the greater community. We've talked a lot about this, but, but I thought it was important to set up a meeting to have that discussion with those partners to let them know what was the latest and what we've decided. And they're very interested and they're working with their respective agencies. And, and I look forward to finding out how that goes and reporting back to this group. The alternate response group met today. Not going to talk to that too much, but I just wanted to mention that. I got to do a ride-along with Sergeant Jeffrey James. And thank you to, to Sergeant James. He's part of the traffic unit. And I got to learn a lot about his work in the traffic efforts at the, at the police department. One thing I'll, I'll add from that, that I experienced was the, the efforts that they do to combat drinking and driving. I thought was really interesting. And I want to explore that further with our chief and then ultimately with all of you. I thought that there were some really cool things that they have done and other communities have done to combat drinking and driving. NACA has a ribbon cutting tomorrow at Cedar Shopping Plaza, Suite 56, at, shoot, I'm so sorry, I think it was 11?
11:45.
Thank you, mayor. 11:45. And then I have a tour scheduled with a new living house as well tomorrow. On Friday, there's a group that's meeting that's discussing the ECO pass for buses at our downtown employers and trying to incentivize and better support employees utilizing the bus service rather than driving and taking advantage of our cheap downtown parking rates for them. The state transportation ADAP board meeting is this Friday at 9:00 AM. And I plan to speak up and to you all, I invite you all to join me and members of the public to engage in that discussion. And then Mountain Line has a board meeting, I think, next Monday. And then I've kind of sat on this for a couple of weeks now, and vice mayor brought this up earlier in the meeting. Ethan Cronz was hit by a vehicle near the intersection of West Route 66 and South Milton at around 5:00 AM on a Saturday a few weeks ago and, and lost his life. And I just wanted to share condolences to, to his family and friends and everyone involved with, with Ethan and that, that tragedy that occurred. And then lastly, in Portland, I learned about their efforts with Vision Zero. And city manager, I am curious to hear offline if you have any experience with, with Vision Zero. But basically, it's a philosophy that the city has adopted that speaks to zero fatalities, whether it's bike, ped, or vehicle. And it's all about designing in a way for zero fatalities. And I've already had preliminary conversations with staff on this, and there is excitement and support for this. There's ideas of potentially setting up a committee within the Transportation Commission. And I figured I should formally bring this forward to us through a fair. And so I'm asking for a fair on this topic, specifically discussion about establishing a Vision Zero philosophy for the city of Flagstaff and a possible creation of a formal committee. There's a whole bunch of communities, over 40 communities, that have committed to Vision Zero. And the goals that are outlined are a clear goal of eliminating traffic, traffic fatalities and severe injuries. Vision Zero plan or strategy is in place? Okay. We'll dive into this more later, but I'm very excited about this topic, and I think it's very relevant to our conversations. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Vice mayor.
Thank you for those updates, councilmember Shumoni. Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you. I'll just want to mention that the independent redistricting commission is having another meeting on Friday at noon that is being held virtually. Please get your word out there. Council has unanimously supported the Coconino County's suggested maps that creates a competitive districts. Right now, what's being presented on how our lines are going to be drawn for our state legislature in particular are just completely uncompetitive. We won't be able to get good representation from competitive processes that we are really charged to have as a democratic republic. So anyways, at noon on Friday, the IRC is taking more public comments. And please, if you can, get to it and log on and see your comments. And this one is only for northern and western Arizona, not all of Arizona. So we're, I, this time, we won't have 247 participants, like some of us had to sit on the line for six hours on Saturday about. So that's all I got. Councilmember McCarthy.
And just as a follow-up, you spoke at, when the redistricting commission was here in town, and I was the next speaker. And the main point I tried to make is that if you have districts that are non-competitive, then the minority party gets ignored and the extremists in the majority party take over. And it doesn't matter if it's Democrats or Republicans. It happens on both sides. And it leads to polarization. And I'm really sick of polarization. We've seen that in DC. Minor point on the transportation board. I encourage people to, to speak in public participation, but I will tell you that you have to register ahead of time. And I believe the deadline is 8:00 AM the day of the meeting. It's probably better to do it a day or so ahead. That's what I've done in the past, and it works well. They send you an email back and it, it's not complicated, but if you don't do it, you won't get to speak. And then my last item is that I'm thinking back to public participation tonight with that man that lives on Grand View. I know things are happening for flood mitigation, and I definitely know some of the things that are going on. But I, I think it would be good if council could have a brief update, maybe every two weeks, sort of like we do on COVID. And, you know, obviously, we're not, I don't want to spend half hour on it. I'm thinking of like five minutes. But I think it would be worthwhile to get a, twice a month anyway, update on what's happening in the flood area. I'll tell you what, if I lived on that street, I'd be very motivated. So, and I empathize with the people that live in that area. And, you know, we've all, you've been there, Mr. City Manager, everyone else on this dais has toured it up there. So I think you all know what I'm talking about. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. City manager.
I know we're having two from, but I can give you a, a quick update on something that's relevant to that. We are meeting next week here at the dais to, on, with the agenda being a fair, or pardon me, not a fair, a petition, asking questions about flood mitigation. You may recall that petition. That will come before you next week. We're hoping that that is an opportunity, not just to inform, but to talk about future meetings and outreach efforts that could be done on a regular basis, as you're suggesting, whether it be an update or regular neighborhood meetings or outreach in terms of postings and, and flyers and that sort of thing. It could be all of the above, but we're hoping to invite that discussion next week. Thank you.
All right. I knew that was coming, but I didn't know it was next week. And I really appreciate the update. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the meeting yesterday, that councilmember Shumoni has mentioned about just, just brainstorming on the guidelines for, for the small business micro grants for the ARPA funding. I, I just want to mention that I had encouraged the team to- I, I just want to mention that I had encouraged the team to reach out and even perhaps provide, you know, categories for women-owned, veteran-owned, minority-owned, Native American-owned businesses to access these grants, or at least to apply. So, you know, just, just, again, I'm speaking to inclusion, diversity, equity, and access. So reach out to women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, Native American-owned businesses. Also, I just want to take this, this opportunity to congratulate Mother Road Brewery for their 10th anniversary tomorrow, and all their efforts with sustainability and partnership with game and fish and wildlife department. Also, on Thursday, we'll, we'll have the Airport Commission meeting. And, and on Monday, I'm attending the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council Board Meeting. Oh, and then, quick plug, because I'm, I'm a soup sponsor, so I am cooking two of my grandma's recipes, soup recipe for the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association Community's Stone Soup Dinner that's going to be held on Monday, November 22nd, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is, this is a free event. Come with your own bowl, though. Bring your own bowl, and we'll share a lot of soups prepared by community sponsors. Community soup sponsors. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. We're adjourned.